Okay, everyone, we're going to call the March meeting to order, please. Member Grover, could you do the roll call, please?
Yes. Member Cameron?
Here.
Member Glass?
Present.
Member Grover's here. Art Johnston?
Here.
Member Casper?
Here.
Chair Sliga Punko?
Here.
Member Wasson?
Here.
Superintendent Dixon?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Hanson?
Here.
Secretary Thibault?
Here.
Student Representative Reddenbaugh?
Here.
And Student Representative John? Not here. Okay. Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Okay. Thank you, Member Grover. Okay, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we have a special treat that The Little Mob and Solid Gold from Central Denfield are going to be performing the National Anthem. So, everyone, join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. (Music) Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last leaving Whose rust stripes and bright stars threw the perilous sight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's grand flare amongst bursting in air gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet raise O'er the land of the free And the home
Thank you, Solid Gold and Little Mob and Mr. Overland, for doing such an excellent job. We really -- what a treat. Thank you.[198.12][198.12](Applause) Very fine example of the great music that we have in our schools. We really appreciate it. Okay, we're going to get started on -- could I have a motion for the approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, that's been moved by Member Wasson, seconded by Member Cameron. May I -- oh, Member Glass?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move for an amendment to add in this special resolution dealing with the Sunshine Week proclamation.
Okay, Member Glass, that would be an addition?
Right, in addition to the special resolution section of the agenda.
Right, at the end of the --
Correct, we have one already.
In the special resolution, yes.
This would be a second one.
Okay. So, Member Glass -- okay, Member Glass has moved the Sunshine Week proclamation, and it's been seconded by Member Johnston. And I think there's a copy, board members, in your folder, if you saw that. I know they made copies from the actual proclamation that was in the paper yesterday. So, is there any discussion on that?
We're just adding it. We'll discuss it at the time that we reconsider.
Okay, let's vote on it, then.
Just to add it to the agenda.
Yes.
Okay, so, we should vote on it. Or, oh, Member Grover, you have something to say. Go ahead.
I don't object to considering this resolution for a future meeting, but we have a very substantial agenda already this evening, and I just suspect by the time we get to this point, and there could be some substantial discussion on this, I suspect, so I am not going to support adding this tonight. Again, this does not, for me, anyway, does not preclude considering it for a future agenda, but I'm not going to support it this evening.
Thank you, Member Grover. Member Glass, you --
Well, I would certainly take away the intent that the newspaper has challenged us with, and since this is the Sunshine Week, to let in the truth and make ourselves transparent, if we don't adopt it, this will certainly lose the challenge that the newspaper has sent for us. And so, I'd say the discussion will be less than 30 seconds at the time, so if you wouldn't give us a 30-second consideration, Member Grover, I'm sorry to hear that.
Okay. Member Johnston, would you like to say?
Yes, I think this, again, was in the paper, is something which we can and should be doing. Sunshine Week, for the people who don't know, is this is about transparency in government. And the Duluth News Tribune was so nice to put it as a big spread on that, and it's something we can and should be doing. As I say, I can't imagine there would be any discussion on this and why it shouldn't be adopted, so I think this would be probably a 10-second vote.
Okay, are there any other further comments? Member Grover?
What the resolution basically says is that we will follow the law. I'm not sure why we need that redundancy. If all board members right now would commit publicly to a 10 or 30-second discussion in a couple hours from now that this would come up, I will support it, but I don't expect that to happen, so unless, you know, failing that, I still would oppose it.
Thank you, Member Grover. Member Johnston?
Member Grover, I would gladly say that there would have to be no discussion on it, assuming that it would be a unanimous vote.
Member Cameron?
Is that the same with Member Glass? I mean, as far as conversation regarding this resolution?
Member Wasson?
What's the question?
Member Cameron, would you like to repeat that?
So, how long do you think discussion will take place with this resolution?
I'd say, I'm willing to adopt it now with no discussion, if you are.
Okay.
So, we can vote to add it and act on it right at this moment. We can make this a vote for the resolution. How's that? Would that satisfy you, Member Grover?
Go ahead, Member Grover.
I'm not sure. I'm thinking, my hesitation is because of the mechanics of it. Your motion was to add it to the special resolutions at the end. Do you want to offer an amendment to your resolution and do it right now? If the Chair would accept that as an amendment, I would support that.
I could do that. Member Glass, go ahead.
Yes, I would withdraw the earlier amendment and move the resolution on its face at this time.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that's been moved. You've got that, Melinda?
No.
So, it's, we still have to add it to the agenda.
Requires unanimous consent.
And it requires unanimous consent, and then we're going to vote on it. So, we're going to vote first to add it. Okay. All those in favor of adding this resolution, and actually, we should probably read what the resolution is.
No.
We don't need to? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of voting to put the resolution on the special resolutions, say aye. Opposed?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I thought the intent of Member Glass's amendment was that we vote on it upfront right now.
We vote on it right now. You're right. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So, to vote on it, to put it right now. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Now, we're going to vote on it.
Needs to be moved.
Needs to be moved. Okay.
I move the resolution to make this our proclamation for Sunshine Week, that this board adopts the features within this document and resolves that all of the attributes of openness and diligence are part of what we do from now and into the future.
Second.
Member Glass, did you want to read maybe the last paragraph at all, or just to get it on record, and then say the resolution and then the date, please?
Sure.
So, just do the last paragraph, probably, is enough.
This comes out of the Duluth News Tribune today, and the last paragraph of the resolution would read, "Now therefore being resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 709 commits in a tribute to Sunshine Week which commemorates the 264th anniversary of James Madison's birth to work diligently to enhance the public's access to government records and information, to increase information provided electronically and online, and to ensure all meetings of deliberative bodies under its jurisdiction and their committees are fully noticed and open to the public." The resolution, I move Resolution B. 3112872.
A second?
It was already seconded, but I'll second it again.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry. All right, end of discussion. Thank you. Okay. Approval of the agenda has been moved and seconded.
Point of order.
And I'd like to -- Member Johnston?
Yes, I do have a discussion item on the agenda. Add my light on.
Okay, go ahead.
Sure. I wanted to bring up an item here that I sent a letter requesting 16 agenda items to the Chair and the Clerk on February 23rd via email and via the U.S. Postal Service. I'd like to thank you for partially adding two of those items to the agenda. A question, who can I thank for adding these two items? Okay, no response. Also, in my February 23rd letter, I requested be notified when the Agenda Setting Session was to take place with the Chairperson, Clerk, and Superintendent per Bylaw 9075, Bylaw 9020, which states all School Board members are entitled to place items for consideration on the agenda, and School Board Policy 8075. I arrived at the normal Tuesday meeting at noon, but was told by Sue that it was postponed, but to an unknown date. I called up Chairperson Sliga Punko, and she said the meeting was Wednesday at noon, and I was not welcome. And in a follow-up email, she said the agenda review, emphasizing review, will take place at noon on March 1st, which is Wednesday. I was there at noon on March 1st along with Judy, Tim, Keith, and Bill, and they refused to have a meeting, saying I wasn't allowed to be there, but could quote no statute or bylaw stating why. No meeting took place, and eventually, everyone left the building at about 2:00 p.m., and they wouldn't tell me when the Agenda Setting Session would be set. My follow-up email, Mr. Dixon stated I had talked to Judy and Tim to create the board agenda. I received the meeting agenda from the U.S. Postal Service on Friday, and it was postmarked on Thursday. So, when was this agenda prepared and by whom? Obviously, by nobody on this board. A follow-up call to Jim Sylvester of Minnesota School Board Association, he said any board member is entitled to attend any school function or meeting as unheard of in Minnesota, for board members to not be allowed to attend any meeting and to add agenda items. Till I can be shown otherwise, it appears this board is violating Bylaw 9075 and Policy 8085, which states the agenda for each meeting shall be prepared jointly, emphasizing jointly, shall be prepared jointly in advance by the Chairperson of the School Board, the Superintendent, and the Clerk, and Bylaw 9020, which says I am entitled to place agenda items on. So, this agenda is a couple hundred pages long. So, when this was agenda prepared and by whom? I don't think the Chair or the Clerk had anything to do with preparing this agenda, which is a violation of our policy. I'd like to have a previous notice on the following 16 items, and what previous notice means, that these will be placed on the next regular School Board meeting. I'm going to read these, and these have to be recorded in the minutes. Number one, censoring Chairperson Sliga Punko for culpably failing to properly perform the duties of a chair of misconduct and neglected duties. Censoring the 2010 Chair Grover for culpably failing to properly perform the duties of a chair of misconduct and neglected duties. Scheduling of a special meeting called by board members on October 2nd per Bylaw 9070 for the discussion of the actions of the chairperson in ordering the handcuffing and removal of a member of the public attempting to speak to the board on October 19th, 2010. Censoring the 2010 Chair Grover and 2010 Clerk Wasson's refusal to allow board participation in the Agenda Setting Session on October 4th. Hiring a parliamentarian to assist the board in properly following its rules during meetings. Hearings on closing schools per Minnesota Statute 123B.51, which for not only the ones on the agenda today, but for Nettleton, Morgan Park, Central Woodland Ridge, and Lincoln Park. The Galley is the 2010-2013 Duluth Teachers Federation contract passed by the School Board in July 20, 2010, in view of the School Board and Administration violating Advisory Opinion 10015 from the Minnesota Department of Administration and Public Employment Labor Relationship Act, Minnesota Statute 179A.14.4. Rescinding of the above resolution passed by erroneous board procedures on July 20th. Number nine, ordering the Administration to provide required documentation for agenda items to board members of public and the media at least three days prior to the meeting. Ordering the Administration to provide requested information to board members in a timely manner. Number 11, televising and recording the organizational meeting, special board meetings, and expanding committee board meetings. 12, distribution of meeting minutes to board members one week after the session occurs. Hiring a registered architect and professional engineers to manage the facilities and the long-range facility plan contracts of the district. Investigating long plane plan savings computed by Johnson Controls on whether these savings were legitimate and well-founded. Negotiating committee appointed and functional per Bylaws 9020 and 9045 and Policy 8055, and requesting the Office of State Audit to conduct a financial investigation audit per Policy 3215. I will give these things to the Secretary to be included in the minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Member Johnston. Okay. Do you want to say something, Member Grover?
This doesn't have to be resolved this evening, but generally, statements by board members, we don't, we don't, our minutes are not a congressional record of our proceedings. The minutes reflect what happened, not who said what.
Actions, right. Thank you. Member Johnston?
Madam Chair, our Bylaw states we shall follow Roberts Rules of Order. Roberts Rules of Order is very clear that, previous notices given of agenda items, they will be in the minutes, as well as a lot of other stuff that has to be in the minutes, and it's always been that way in the past, and I expect it to continue.
Okay, let's move on the approval of the agenda. All those in favor of the approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries six to one, I think, with Member Johnston against. Okay. And we go on to the reading and approval of the minutes. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Member Wasson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Cameron. Is there any discussion? Member Johnston?
Yes, I do have some corrections on the minutes. Page five. Down at the bottom. Where Sliga Punko called for a vote on resolutions as presented, and the minutes neglect to point out, that does say that I had a point of order. The minutes should, the minutes have to record all points of order. I had four points of order, not one, and that the discussion must be in the minutes about what was declared on those. And the point of order was that discussion was required on this item. All points of order, again, must be recorded in the minutes. Also included in the minutes must be the response of the Chair, and there's no response given to the first three points. That should be in the minutes. And then, when she did respond to the fourth point, her response was that my discussion was in order, so I request those to be added to the minutes. On page number six. At the top of that, it's indicated that I withheld items 2A1, 3A1, and 2, 4B4, and 4B5, 6D, and E. This was very clear that this was withheld. In fact, it was withheld at 7:34 during the DVD review of this, and that request was also confirmed by the Chairperson that this was being withheld for a vote. And again, similar to lower down there, where a Member Grover had an item, it says in here, requested a separate vote on that item. Such verbiage should also be included in my items, because I have requested a special vote on those. Now, page seven. It indicates that a vote was taken on the balance of the Business Committee report, but there is no vote on the items that were withheld by myself, which is items 4B4 and 4B5. This board practice to be able to withhold items off these types of consent agenda items. As a consequence, these change orders for Denfield and Laura Mack were never approved by this board, and must be stated as such in the minutes, that they were not even approved. The board has a practice of having a separate vote on requested items. This also agrees with Roberts Rules of Order, page 265, line 2 to 6, and I will quote that. Sometimes, a series of independent resolutions on main motions dealing with different subjects is offered in one motion. In such case, one or more of the several resolutions or more main motions may, must, receive separate consideration and vote at the request of a single member. Also, on page 106, line 4 to 6, it says, "Any resolution in the series must be taken up and voted on separately at the demand of a single member. Such a demand can even be made when another has the floor." Items 4B4 and 4B5 consequently are null and void, and those change orders are not valid. And I expect to have those in the minutes.
Member Johnston? Just so, if you remember, we had a vote to call the question, and then I did say we were voting on the whole Business Committee report, and so, we voted on it, just as it says in the minutes.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Before. Madam Chair, yes, that is in there, but as I pointed out in my, what I just said here, when an item is removed on the consent agenda item, not only must it be taken up individually, it is separate from that, so when you passed the vote on that Business Committee, those items were not included, because they were withdrawn, not only is it the custom of this board, but it is also according to our Rules of Order that we have adopted in our Bylaws to say that. So, there's no question that those items were pulled out. It should have been discussed and should have been passed by this board, but were not.
Want to say something?
Members of the board, as you saw, I'm planning to have legal counsel here for a meeting, and in the meantime, I'll double-check that, but I believe we followed proper protocol, but, so, I'll get back to you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Member Johnston?
Madam Chair, I believe we have legal counsel present, and I'm asking that she give us an opinion.
Chair Sliga Punko, members of the board, Superintendent Dixon, as I understand it, the question is whether, in fact, the motion at the February 5th meeting to call the question of the entire Business Committee agenda takes precedence over the individual request of a board member. The minutes are not clear whether the request was merely for discussion or for actually a separate vote. In any case, that's an individual board member making a request, but the full board, when voting, can supersede the practice of allowing an individual board member to withhold for a vote. So, I haven't reviewed the tape. I was here, but it was pretty late, and I don't recall specifically, but I do recall that the motion was for the entire balance of the agenda, and that was clear that board members were voting on that, and there was a majority that voted on that. And so, my view would be that it supersedes, because it was clear that it was for the entire balance of the agenda.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Dorisley. Okay, let's vote on the minutes, then, approval of the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so, that's five to two with Members Glass and Johnston voting against that. Okay. Moving on in the agenda, we have audience speaking. Okay, our first speaker is Kurt Leitz, I think, and following Kurt is Terry Akervik. Just so you know, Member Grover is going to, just, we're timed for three minutes, so he's going to put the 30-second warning.
All right, thank you, Member Grover. Good evening. My name is Kurt Leitz. I have two children in the district, one at Woodland and one at Nettleton. I appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts tonight, which I've also expressed in an email to each of you, board members, thanks to those who have already responded thoughtfully to that. We recently welcomed the good news that lower-than-expected health care costs for next year have reduced the projected budget deficit by approximately $1.7 million. Tonight and in the coming weeks, you'll hear impassioned pleas that this money be used to save many worthy programs. I'd like to suggest that the board consider a single guiding principle in weighing these decisions, the cascading positive effects that certain investments can have on all students' achievement. I'll illustrate this principle with two examples. The first, special education for students with emotional or behavioral disorders. Proposed cuts, my understanding, is that it would include closing the program for students with the most severe such problems, meaning they would be mainstreamed in regular classrooms. By definition, students who qualify for these services have problems that severely impact their educational performance or the educational performance of their peer students. These are students whose challenges are so disruptive to their own and their peers' ability to learn that a regular classroom has been deemed inappropriate. Mainstreaming them for budgetary reasons seems to fail those students and all the other students in their classrooms. My second example regards assistant principals. This is an area that's considered administrative and thus is politically easy to cut. People imagine some bureaucrat sitting in an office and just pushing papers. But the assistant principal that I know best, Kathy Kouch-Marshall at Nettleton School, is hardly in her office. She's in a cool-down room with a student working on a positive behavioral intervention. She's in a classroom with an overburdened teacher consulting on education for a large group of students. She's assisting a student getting a ride to school who landed in a homeless shelter the night before. Now, targeted investments in areas such as these directly benefits the students who are most in need, the students who are struggling hardest to close the achievement gap, but they also benefit all the students in their schools. They provide cascading positive effects for all the students. Families in need receive support, and families of means remain invested in our district. That's the promise of a public education. That's why I'm here tonight. That's why you're here as public servants. Thank you for your commitment to our schools.
Thank you, Kurt. Terry Akervik, and the next person is Henry Banks.
Good evening. I said good morning earlier, but I teach elementary music. Chair Sliga Punko, board members, Superintendent Dixon, Assistant Superintendent Gronseth, directors and administrators that are here tonight, and I see lots of parents and family that were here before. My name is Terry Akervik. I'm the Music Curriculum Specialist Coach for Duluth Public Schools. I also teach at Nettleton and Merritt, residential site. I also teach at Nettleton and Merritt, residential site. I am here, it's been a year since I've visited you in this forum, and it's Music in Our Schools Month again. March has celebrated music in our schools across the nation, across the state of Minnesota, and across our city and community with performances and events. And tonight, it was absolutely marvelous, and I know that Director, Mr. Mark Overland, left earlier. I told him he was gonna miss his compliments, but Solid Gold and Little Mob, they were absolutely fabulous, so I really appreciate, and let's extend them another big round of thanks. It was wonderful. That program has grown, and that program wasn't just Mr. Overland. There have been other choir directors that have been involved in their learning of musical skills throughout the years. And really, the performance that you saw was the end result of 11 or 12 years of the study of music, and at this high level of what you saw tonight was, is equal to an AP course. It's an honors course for them. And to see some of those children when they started in kindergarten with us and all the way up through this 12th grade is absolutely tremendous, and the goosebumps. I know I wasn't the only one, and I could have come around and collected data, goosebump, goosebump, goosebump. It was wonderful, so thank you for allowing that to happen again. Everything the students learn and everything we teach in the schools is based on state and district standards. In music and arts, we have state standards divided by grade levels, and we have K3 standards, four and five, six through eight, and then nine through 12. We have a couple different strands in music in the arts, and it's artistic foundations with the elemental elements of rhythm, melody, pitch, harmony, and form. And it's also the process. It's the creating and making of music. It's the performing-presenting, which you saw the end result, and it's also the responding critique. So it'd be going back to after this performance and critiquing themselves and grading themselves. This last couple of weeks, we had performances by East Pep Band. We had the central changing from Central Site for a B-ball game to East. They didn't have enough instruments. It was fabulous, the support that they had. We have middle school students visiting with Libby Larson, an American's most performed composer, at a youth workshop at UMD next week. We have a residence, music residency of the science of sound with physics and music at Nettleton this week, and you're all invited to come and visit. We had many students come to a young people's concert that was presented by the Duluth Superior Symphony Orchestra for many of our students in the city. I want to thank you for your support over the years. I want you to think as you make your budget decisions, how do you put a monetary value on the gift of music in this performance tonight? How do you put a monetary value on a student being accepted to a middle school honors orchestra for the state? How do you put a monetary value on a Nettleton kindergartner's expression of joy with their first experience of hearing an instrument played? To experience music and feel the emotion or goosebumps is not necessarily a data-driven subject, but it is as important as anything we learn in school to become a productive citizen of this community of Duluth. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. I really appreciate all that you do and what music means in this district. We have probably the best music in the area, in our whole district. Henry Banks, and then Stacy Akterhoff, I think it is. Thank you.
So, should I say that again, or not? Okay. I made a proposal here a couple months ago, I believe it was, regarding a project that a committee in Duluth is working on. You all have the information, and so we have not heard back from you, and so we're just wondering when the decision will be made, yea or nay. So, thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Stacy Akterhoff, and then Doug Frisk.
Good evening, school board members. Is this okay? I'm not a public speaker, so forgive me. I am a Nettleton parent, and I edited greatly to try to stay within your three minutes, so I will do my very best. Thank you. Before I share my concerns, I want you to clearly understand where I stand. I have supported building updates and new facilities. I thank you, our school board, for the challenging work that you have faced. I have thanked our superintendent via email for his leadership and his tackling of our deteriorating facilities. I have emailed my legislators regarding educational funding. I am not an angry person or an agitator, but I'm exhausted. My neighborhood school is suffering, and my child's education is suffering, and my child's classmates are suffering. I want to promote my neighborhood school, and I need you to help me come up with reasons. I am a middle-income parent. I selected Nettleton as my daughter's school when she was entering kindergarten. It was a school of choice for me at the time. It is now my neighborhood school. In order of importance, here are the reasons why I selected Nettleton. Number one, for its racial diversity, for the science program, for the small-group reading programs, and the recommendations from others that the staff was outstanding. Since that time, Nettleton has now become my neighborhood school. I knew that Nettleton had a high rate of poverty. I knew the risks for families in poverty include increased risks of homelessness, addiction, domestic violence, job instability, poor transportation, lack of experience with higher education, and mental and general health issues. I knew there would be many children at Nettleton who are not ready to learn. We all see it there daily. I chose Nettleton because I was astounded with an incredible effort of this district to create programming and staffing ratios to meet the needs of all the kids within the walls of that school. This was a progressive environment where a school was trying to meet the needs of the very needy and attract and maintain ready-to-learn families with a wide range of meaningful educational programming. What an educationally sound idea. We have 81% poverty at our school, 81%. It is time to recognize this is not an ordinary school within Duluth Public Schools. I'm asking you to salvage our compensatory education funding. We need qualified people to work with these families. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Doug Frisk, and then Marcia Stromgren.
I actually wanted to come up and say thank you for something. As most of you up there know, I'm kind of a school board policy wonk. I've been hanging around the meetings for about a year and a half now, and thank you for not, you know, kicking me out for being that creepy guy who hangs out at the meetings. I've paid many times to get access to the school board book and the backing documentation for it. I'll come into the school board office and request it, because I like to see the financial numbers. I like to be able to see the actual numbers that you're discussing during the school board meeting. And one of the things that's new to the district, well, it's not precisely new, it's been going on for about a year, but has, for this school board year, has now been fully functional, is this thing called Board Book. And all of the backing documentation that I used to come in and have copied at 10 cents a page is now available freely online. So I have the ability to go in each month and take a look at what the revised budget numbers are for this month. I can see Tom Casper's Wadham numbers and how they're going up and down, and, well, I know they're not your Wadham numbers. And this evening, I printed out about 40 pages worth of that backing documentation that I was gonna bring with me to the meeting, but then my daughter was late for a Taekwondo lesson, and I completely forgot it. But I just wanted to say thank you for having that all online now, and I know it's been a bit of an effort to get that done, and I understand it's also been something that's made things more efficient within the office because it is now more available. But as a concerned citizen who likes to follow the activities of the school board and likes to see what's actually going on behind the scenes, thank you very much for making that available.
Thanks, Doug. Okay, Marcia Stromgren.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Dixon, I'd like to address an issue that seems to be very popular right now, and it's called bullying, and not something that is new. Certainly, it went on when I went to school in the district here, but it was never as prevalent as it is today. Most of you know me, I'm around here all the time. Seems to be my second home. But at the last education meeting last Tuesday, Superintendent Dixon mentioned many different things that could be included in bullying, and I have a feeling that what I'm seeing at some of these meetings could fall into that category. Many of the tactics used by board members should have been included, such as shutting off the microphone of citizens because they were upset with the district's, with a district board member who broke his promises. That's a First Amendment right that we have as citizens to come here and address you, whether you like what we're saying or not. You have no right to shut the microphone off on us. He was within his three minutes. He didn't violate any law, and neither did the woman that was here the year before that. So shutting off the microphone is a violation of First Amendment rights. These people were peaceful. I never saw any violence. Might have been a little bit angry, but I mean, how many of you have never been angry at somebody else and what they're doing? Excluding board members from full participation, such as attending agenda meetings, agenda-setting meetings, and voting to keep items off the agenda. I've been a public servant for a combined number of years now, 10 and a half on local township board, and I'm in my third term as a Solomar District Supervisor. I've spoken before at various board meetings, and I have never seen any group yet set an agenda and not let items be put on there at the board meeting. That's entirely foreign to anything I've ever seen. And then on February 15th, which was the last board meeting, before the items were spoken about that Art Johnston had pulled, a motion was made to vote on the whole thing. A motion was made to adjourn, and bang, was done. Why do you circumvent your own board policies? I just, that's very, very strange. And then you circumvented the rights of the people to vote on an issue that affects them financially, and you'll be coming back to us and asking us for more money this fall. If the board expects bullying to be controlled, perhaps they need to set the example themselves as leaders. That is your responsibility, to show to all those who you represent what you really mean by bullying, because you're doing it all the time up here. Thank you.
Okay, Member Casper, are there any more? Thank you for checking. Is there more? Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, and we have one more speaker, Karen Stiles.
I want to thank you for being here tonight. It's my first school board meeting in Duluth, and I want to particularly thank school board Member Casper and Cameron for, I heard your invitation to speak as a parent, and I know that you all share that, so I want to thank you for that. I am the mother of a family at Nettleton, and I specifically identify myself as a family member because at Nettleton, you're not just a parent, and you're not just a student. The entire family is a part of the child's experience. And so I'm here tonight to specifically address two issues that we, I feel is a threat to our community. And number one is the proposed elimination of our vice principal position, and number two is the withdrawal of funds. Did you all receive my letter? Yeah? Okay, good. And I'd like to just highlight what I've mentioned in the letter, okay? Number one, we are a magnet family. We've chosen Nettleton. I drive past two schools on my way to Nettleton, and we chose Nettleton for three primary reasons. At the time, little did we know what was there, really. But at the time, we chose Nettleton because of its educational programs. It was teaching reading, like we, like they were, research was telling us to teach it, okay, all over the country. Number two, the leadership was amazing, and I knew enough to know that you needed to go there where there was great leadership. And number three, the cultural diversity and the richness of the cultural diversity at Nettleton for our family was an incredible opportunity. Little did I know that diversity is not so easy. Cultural diversity, rich and easy for us, but at Nettleton, there's also economic diversity and a diversity of families and family experiences. And this is one of the things I want to address. Diversity is not easy. We talk about diversity, but the bottom line is we need support. And Kathy Kusch-Marshall is a key player in that. I would not be here as a Nettleton mother if it wasn't for Kathy. Kathy drops everything when I walk in sobbing in panic, because what are we doing? And then she helps me stay, and our kids have stayed through my panic, not theirs, so that they can benefit from the relationships they have across this huge expanse. And that's it. It's just not a little bit of cultural diversity at Nettleton. The expanse is huge, and that requires support. So I'm here to say, keep Kathy Kusch-Marshall. She is an incredibly special woman. She is skilled, she is committed, and she has integrity like I have not seen. The second thing I want to ask is for you not to cut our funds. We've already lost some of the reading, the way in which reading and math is taught, and with all the needs, with that diversity is diversity in learning, and we need those resources. So thank you for allowing me to give you my story. And I also need to let you know that choice means I could homeschool our kids. Choice means I could find another program, and it's Nettleton or something else for us. So please consider that. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, we're gonna move on in our agenda to Superintendent.
Members of the board, two pieces. One would be the communications, I think is next. There's one communication noted from Member Johnston. In fact, I think that was the same one you just read, Member Johnston, that's noted in the file there as a communication. As far as my report tonight, I have a number of things, but first of all, you know, we shared some news last, last week with you on some incredibly good news on our health insurance premiums, and we really hadn't had a chance to talk to you about that, so I wanted to spend a few minutes on that tonight. I think in general, there isn't probably a company or involved that's not trying to figure out how to control healthcare costs across this country. And we've been fortunate, I think, to, through our labor management process, to put together a committee where, again, management and labor sits down together, and we both have a vested interest to control those, those costs and look at multiple ways to do it. And the committee is very active. We've brought in many consultants over the last number of years to try to figure out different strategies to, in fact, minimize increases in healthcare premiums while at the same time making sure all of our employees have appropriate healthcare and go to the doctors when they need to in the process. And so I asked tonight, and I'll talk after they're done on a few other things, for Bill Hanson to come tonight, and Frank Warner, and Mike Zwach. They've all three been major leaders in the, our labor management process and specifically on the insurance committee, and just sort of give you an update on some of the reasons and then be available to answer any specific questions. Then I'll talk about a few other things. Sure, so.
Come on up. Thank you for taking the time to share with us. Want to just go there?
Do you want me to lead? Sure. All right. Members of the board, I'm Frank Warner, President of Duluth Federation of Teachers, and a teacher at Central Denfeld High School. And some of the students who sang tonight were my students. And I had a tear in my eye before Terry Akrovic, I want that on the record, if not in the I welcome the opportunity to come before you tonight. It seemed that these are the best of times, these are the worst of times. We all know what the worst of times is. We have some very earnest and well-meaning people who come to ask you to save an assistant principal. A choice has to be made between assistant principal and perhaps a couple of bottom-salary-scheduled teachers. Priorities come in here. We shouldn't have to make that choice. But the fight is not with you. You're good people. You're here trying to solve problems and make our district better, or you wouldn't be sitting on the school board. The fight is taking place in St. Paul, where a fellow named Garofalo wants to do away with all of the compensatory ed funding going to the cities of the first class. If that happens, we'll be questioning more than should an assistant principal stay or should assistant principal go. So there are tough things that we're dealing with. There's also some good news, which we're here to talk to you about tonight. And starting, let me say that, I'm feeling very, very proud this evening. I had a good day. I don't know if you had a good day. I had a good day. My students probably had a good day too, I wasn't there this morning. Where was I? I was out touring the new schools. I hadn't been in any of the elementary schools. And along with Superintendent Eric Heiser, we went and we visited Piedmont, Laurin MacArthur, then the new Denfeld School, swung out, and went to the Eastern High School and to Lester Park. Is anybody out? I'm excited. I am excited. I expected the high schools to be impressive. They're high schools. And I guess I'm a high school teacher, know what to look for. Went into the elementary schools, and oh my gosh. I kept thinking to myself, I'm in Duluth. These are Duluth schools. God bless you for sticking through with this and following through. I felt good, not only as a teacher, but as a citizen. I've lived here my entire 62 years of life. I've taught with the school district for 40 years. I've been around for a while. I know what kinds of things we've gone through with facilities. I've seen plans come and go, and this is the first thing I've seen come to fruition. Finally, finally. So that's good. The superintendent and I were having lunch. Couple members of the public came up and thanked him for the new school by their house, and the improvement in their property values, and how proud they were. On the way out, I stopped at a table of five young businessmen from the western part of town, who expressed their support for this school board and the work you're doing, and their support for the new schools. All of them have school-aged children, all of them have children in Duluth Public Schools. These are the people we want to impress. These are the people we want to keep within our school district. We don't need to give them reason to doubt us. We need to give them reason to think that we have a good idea of what we're doing and where we're going. And I think if you walk through those schools, you can't help but have that idea. Now, none of that has anything to do with insurance. But on the other hand, it does. It does. As we try to move forward, it's not enough to have bricks and mortar buildings, you have to have programs. You have to have people in them. One of the single biggest costs for any employer, be it in the private sector or the public sector today, is employee health insurance. No matter where you go, it's being discussed. In the state legislatures, in the national legislature, in each and every boardroom, it's being discussed. It's an increasing cost of which no one seems to have an idea how to control. We have looked and looked and looked on how to do that. Now, not all school boards would be perhaps of the opinion that the teacher union is their ally in keeping down employee costs. After all, we bargain contracts. However, if we bargain a contract that bankrupts the school district, we're not well off. If we bargain a contract that causes injury to their educational system, we're not well off. These are our jobs, this is our community, these are our schools. We're very, very concerned. But we're also members of families, we support families, and we're concerned about our health insurance. And I know, because I've been negotiating contracts for 30 years, that we have oftentimes sacrificed salary for other benefits. We made a conscious decision to do that. And it's been very, very frustrating to see those benefits grow out of proportion to what anyone ever intended. So we've looked for ways of keeping down costs. We once had a pledge, we would save $170,000. How do you do that? Well, one of the things that we've had going for us in the last few years was the labor management process that came about at the time that Keith became superintendent. We had spent years fighting with the school board and with the former superintendent. We took everything to arbitration. The union, nearly always won, well, 95% of the time we won. The district incurred substantial penalties and costs, running into the millions of dollars, not to mention the legal fees. In the past nearly six years, we have not had one arbitration, not one legal fee related to that sort of thing. Where did that money go that was saved? Well, it went for students. It went into our system. It didn't go into the pockets of attorneys. Not that there's anything wrong with attorneys, while that can be debated. But I have a friend who's an attorney, I think. It's better to spend it on what we're about. And our labor management process has enabled us to come together and to work together. We've settled contracts without bringing in people from the outside, without hiring attorneys to drive up from the twin cities, charging portal to portal, and sit here and meet with us. We've done it ourselves. Why is it possible for us to do it ourselves at this point in time when never before? It's a simple thing. It's called trust. A gentleman spoke about the information now available online. The State Department of Education has for a number of years, had all sorts of information available online about school district finances. You want to find out what the last adjusted audit was, you want to find out what the net unappropriated operating fund balances, changes they're in, and so forth, you can find it. We can all find it. It's not a matter of keeping information from people, it's a matter of how we use the information, how we act on it. And we've been acting on that information through a labor management process, which in many ways is unique. And because we all have the same information, we can move forward on the base of that information. At one point in time, we had a superintendent who actually told the insurance companies to give us misinformation, to overstate rates and experiential differentials, our costs incurred. And so we were, we had no way of knowing what we were talking about in determining what was real and not real relative to rates and increases and so forth. We did know one thing, the costs were always going up. We did know that when we came to talk about keeping costs down, we had a limited number of things we could utilize. But then we got into a labor management process, or extended that process, to include insurance. An insurance committee where we would all come together, get the information, share the information, discuss the information, consider our options. This has made it possible for us to do some things that are unique, that haven't been done in other parts of the state. It's called trust. It's based upon trust. If we didn't have the trust, we couldn't go forward. We'd be back to fighting. And we can be good at that. This is a much better situation. Why waste energy and time, why not solve problems? In the past, we found that the only way to save money on insurance was to increase copays, or reduce levels of benefits, or transfer costs from the employer to the employee. And the net effect of that was, there was a reduction in cost, albeit a small one, for a short period of time. The next year, they took that in consideration, just jacked up the prices more. We'd watch the insurance companies come in with a line of suits. Nothing wrong with people in suits. I myself wear a suit occasionally. And I look really good, I think. But they would all come in in nicer suits than I can afford, driving very nice automobiles, and earning substantial salaries, and sit at the table, and present us the information on why they needed us to pay so much more. We thought, is there a better way? Is there a better way of doing this? And we set out to find one. And then I'll turn it over to Mr. Zwak, who can outline the better way. I feel like I'm selling a pyramid scheme or something. And now for the better way. Mr. Zwak?
Members of the board, I'm Mike Zwak, I'm a teacher at Morgan Park, and I've been chairman of the insurance committee, and I promise I'm going to be shorter and more to the point.
He's on my side.
About six years ago, we came together as an insurance committee, and we, you know, as Frank had stated, that we looked at different alternatives and options. And from the teacher's side of things, we explored and started to research the Public Employees Insurance Program, which is a statewide plan, and it is the same program that all state employees have. And when we had the opportunity as educators to participate in that and look at them as an option through a bid process, after learning about it and having them back a couple, three or four times, and continuing to examine the plan, we decided to have them give us a bid. And through the cooperation of the district to want to work with us, we decided to make the switch, probably two years ago. And after the first year and only three months of utilization and experience, instead of 15% increases, we saw an increase of about 6%. We thought, well, we're making a little bit of progress anyways. And then as of March 9th, we had our second insurance committee, where our second renewal was coming up, and that was last Wednesday. And we were pleasantly surprised to see, after our first year of experience and utilization, our costs went down 8%. So we were very excited, obviously, about that, but why is that happening? The P plan, or the Public Employees Insurance Program, is a nonprofit plan, okay? It's the same plan that was in the statewide healthcare bill that you may have paid attention to in the legislature the past couple of years. We benefit from the negotiating power of all the state employees, so when they go and get the bids from the providers and the HMOs, we have the benefit of all the state employees' bargaining power when they negotiate rates for medical services. We are also part of a larger group now. We partner with 14 other school districts, which also helps maybe smooth out the ups and the downs to some extent. And the fact that maybe we're a more senior organization with a lot of senior teachers, and we can partner with younger, maybe a little bit more healthier people, that ultimately helps our rates as well. So that's another thing that helped us. We also are in a different plan, and it's been an adjustment for our members, where we're now in a managed care situation, where we have to have a primary care physician. And we have copays and deductibles that weren't part of the prior plan, that makes our employees have to pay attention more to the insurance program, and also manage their money a little differently as far as when they go to the doctor, how they go to the doctor, and who they go to the doctor. And when you're paying attention more, you're maybe a little more conscious of all of those things, which ultimately, when added together, helps our premium renewal rates. So when you put all those into a package, ultimately what has transpired is we've experienced a negative 8% since we went to P. When you look at the rates we're now paying, we're actually paying lower rates with this plan than when we actually started two years ago, which is kind of an exciting trend that we've never, ever seen before. So moving forward, we hope to continue to contain costs using this program and to minimize increases. And, you know, if the experience of this past year is any indication, you know, we hope that this will be our plan and continue to be our plan in the future. So with that, Mr. Hanson.
Thanks to Frank and Mike for being here, and I will be very short, because you hear me enough on other issues, and I don't have to belabor this one, because they've made most of the points that we need to be concerned with. I have not been involved with this committee from the beginning. I came in somewhat soon after, but the initiation of the committee, I was not there for. And so you have other people to thank for that. I would tell you that I really appreciate the process. It's really pretty simple. You put information in front of people. Generally, we're kind of, you know, it's a difficult topic, and we, you know, evaluate things and think up options and pursue options. And some things work and some things don't. But with the right information, with a collaborative group, and with everybody focused on the bottom line of costs, in the end, I think that's the most effective process that we can put in place. And I think, as I mentioned, I believe in the email that I sent you last week, the process to me has been validated. I was convinced when we were considering this, that the district needed to do something I'm not convinced, or, you know, I'm not going to stand here and say that we've found the solution forever and ever, because I think healthcare is a dynamic thing, and we'll have to continue to be very aggressive in addressing it. But I would tell you, to me, it validates the process, we need to do something different. We did, and this is a time where at least we've got some good news to share with you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, all three of you. You know, I think that's the other thing, we've said, working together, it's a dynamic process, and if this doesn't work over time, we'll try something different. The bottom line is, how do we contain costs? I think the other thing I would just add, that I've appreciated about the committee is, you know, most of our employees, we really have one healthcare plan. And the reality is, what I've also appreciated, while the group is primarily teachers and administrators working together through our labor management process, particularly in this area, we've really been conscious about the rest of our employees. We're getting to a point now where frankly, healthcare can consume, if you're on a family plan, almost all of what you make. And that's becoming a real challenge. And we've had, at times, we look at plans that may just benefit higher-paid employees and say, well, that might work, but with so many other employees looking at their salary packages and benefits, we're trying to also think of ways to contain costs but make it work for them as well. And I've appreciated that, because that's another whole piece to this plan that we always have to worry about as well. I wanted to add a few other things. You know, tonight was a great example, again, with the students here, I think, from solid gold and little mob. I like that, little mob. I'd like one of those sweatshirts. Little mob, that sounds kind of cool, that's a part of a little mob. But, you know, phenomenal again. And I think there's the point, I want to share just a few examples tonight, because it's been quite a last week, 10 days, for Duluth Public Schools, when you think about our students. And I think the measure is in the pudding, and you see pretty clearly the kids tonight, how outstanding they are. And I think that does relate to the quality of our staff, and the support from parents and everyone in the work we do. But the reality is, there's been so much. You know, we were here, I don't remember when it was, in the last week or sometime, when Students of the Future put on the chilling state of education, and wow, was that well-done. And I appreciate the number of you participating in that process. And hearing sort of them prioritize their priorities about education and some of the activities they've had us involved with, I thought it was well-planned, and great young leaders, and a really powerful night, a sobering night as well, when it comes to talking about school finance. You know, our East High School Daredevil robotic team, I think we're going to have them come. If you haven't seen this year's robot, you've got to. It's pretty phenomenal, and as you see, it took first place at the regional competition, and it will advance to the national competition. Anyone who has donations will take them. Helped get this team to nationals, what a great piece. And, you know, I went out a couple of times to East to watch them when they were putting this together. I didn't know if they'd get the mini-bot to work, but quite a driver, so it was pretty phenomenal. The congratulations to East Boys Hockey, and I know some of you are down there as well, go back and forth. go back and forth as well. And I have to tell you, we did the state of Minnesota proud. First of all, to have a hockey game like that in the finals. Watching Duluth all the way through, not just the team, but the way the coaches responded, the crowd, the kids. I can't tell you how many people, when I was down there, came up and made special comments about sort of the way Duluth carried itself there, Duluth East, in that tournament. To be a part of the longest game in history, to have really the first-place team in the state, and really having to come up through and play overtime games in every bracket all the way through. I'd hate to add up how many minutes our boys played during three games, but they must have played about five total games. And to, at the end of regulation, to be tied 2-2 in the championship game against a team that everyone just said would blow anybody out and were. I think there was a point where, yes, it would have been great to win, but the reality was, you just had two great programs there, and you could tell by the end of the third overtime that both teams sort of, I think it was the highest level of sportsmanship when two teams say, we've been out here together, we've been playing for about five hours, and the reality is...
To end the way it ended.
I mean, I don't know. It was phenomenal. I appreciated our coaches. I appreciated our head coach going into Eden Prairie's locker room and congratulating them. I think that's a high-class thing to do. And the way our students responded as well. I got to see the A.D. right after we beat Edina in overtime, and he was, again, complimentary on both the quality of our team but how we played. And so, again, I just think that speaks volumes. I know the state broadcasters were saying, you know, this has moved hockey ahead in Minnesota miles, and of course, we're miles ahead of anybody when it comes to hockey. So it was phenomenal. The East Boys and Girls Nordic Ski Team both won state titles as well, which is quite a feat as well. Our East High School Destination Imagination Team has headed to state competition, taking second place in the regionals. And the list goes on and on. You saw the music kids here tonight and Central Denfell Group. You saw, obviously, did very well at the Minnesota State Region 7A Large Group Choral Music Contest. And so I just want to acknowledge all the neat things going on right now and how our students have presented themselves in many different arenas. And I'll end with that because some of you might want to add on to my comments, because I know you were a part of a lot of these experiences as well, and you might want to add your thoughts as well. But I just want to congratulate everybody. It was really proud to be there.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'm just going to add a couple little sentences because I went to the robotics competition, and when Superintendent Dixon was talking about the mini-bot, a lot of people probably don't know what that is, but there was three different parts of the competition. It was really exciting. It was almost like being at a hockey game, the whole competition. It was very exciting, watching the kids, and they had red zubas, the pants on. Some of you might remember, when I was early teaching, kids wore those, and it was really fun because they'd come back, and they were just really excited, and they did so well. It was very fun. One thing that you did miss, or actually, two things, Superintendent, we have a couple of Woodland kids that really succeeded. One is the state champion for spelling.
That's right.
Yeah, I'd written that down so I wouldn't forget. And then there's another one that succeeded in science with a phenomenal experiment. I'm pretty excited about that because I actually have tiger lilies in my yard. I'm sure Member Casper does too, maybe a lot of us. So, that's pretty neat. So, sorry to take that, but I just...
I'm glad. I had that.
Yeah. So, anyway, did any other board member want to mention anything at all? Let's do it. You guys did such a great job last week at the forum.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that we're very proud of our accomplishments, and we thank you for the recognition, so.
Thank you. Yeah, very impressive group last week. Okay, we're going to move on to our standing committee reports, and we'll start with the education committee report. Member Wasson, if you could take that away.
This is the education committee report for March. Item 1A, we had Ron Haglen here from the Office of Education Equity to discuss fund allocations. Item B was a market research proposal done by Katie Kaufman. Item C was an anti-bullying update done by Superintendent Dixon. Item D, Dr. Dixon also spoke about the Duluth Academy in collaboration with the City of Duluth and Lake Superior College and the University of Minnesota Duluth. We have, item two was informational items, and they do not require board approval. We had grant applications from Scott Anderson Leadership Foundation in the amount of $16,000. And action items, I think I'll take those now if that's okay with you. Item B, we have on page 52, Resolution E3112860 for the acceptance of grants. One is from the Department of Minnesota Department of Education, and the second is the Northland Foundation. I will move Resolution E3112860.
Thank you, Member Wasson. So that has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Cameron. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Member Wasson. Go ahead.
And then we move on to extended trip requests. We have students from the automotive program traveling to New York, Cognor Parks 4th Grade to Wolfridge, East High School's Acapella Choir to Washington, DC. Item D is access to internet student data. And item E, we congratulate three graduates, Valerie Grace, Cory Wurda, and Amy O'Brien, on diplomas and graduation. I move the education committee report for March.
Thank you, Member Wasson. It's been moved, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Member Cameron. Any discussion or items? Oh, Member Johnston.
Madam Chair, can we pull out items on this? Or we would like to have a discussion on a couple of these items. Could we do that, or when do you want to do that?
Yeah, if you want to pull a couple of items, sure.
I could. Yes, I might have one B and one C.
One B and one C.
Correct.
Okay, is there anything else? Oh, Member Casper.
And I'd like to add one D to that as well.
One D. Okay, and that, is there anything else? Okay, let's start with one B. Member Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, some of the things we talked about here at the committee meeting, and I'd want to really emphasize that we got these handouts. I'm sure everybody didn't see them. The schools have put these together with the administration. Anyway, they're promoting the schools, and I think these are really, really excellent. One, the new one by the middle park, or by the middle school, and these other ones have been here before, but it's really, really excellent promotion of our schools by our teachers and by our administration, and that's really, really acknowledged and by all the board we talked about, and I think it's really, really excellent. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, and let's go to...
I have some... Oh, I'm sorry.
Member Casper.
Thank you. And I don't know if Katie's here. I can't see if she is here. There she is. You're behind the podium from me, sorry. Have we been able to, and maybe Mr. Grandseth can answer this for me, have we been able to, do we have a contract now with Zenith Research to do the analysis that we discussed
Members of the board, Member Casper, we're in the process of working with a company called Decision Resources, and they actually contacted me today, and we've gone the process of getting the survey ready.
So will we see that before it goes, before it's enacted, or we'll just see the results of it? So in essence, I'm asking, who's going to, are they going to formulate the questions? Is the administration going to formulate the questions that we're asking?
We're working, administration is working with the company to formulate the questions.
Okay, so give me a real brief timeframe, so if we're in the process of, we've made contact, we're moving ahead with it, do we expect to be asking, going out, enacting that survey in April?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and then we're probably by May, we'll see some of those results?
I believe so.
Okay, so in the interim, as Member Johnson had mentioned, we have the beautifully done flyers, or I'll call them brochures, I guess, for lack, but we have these nicely done that are talking about some of our students, some of the programs. The middle school one especially is very bright colored. It looks very contemporary. And those have gone out now to prospective students, or what are we doing to disseminate those?
Basically, because January, February, the beginning of March tend to be the period where parents are making decisions about where to register their kid for next year, what we do is a series of activities, and one of them is we pull a mailing list of parents in, who have children who are getting ready to go to kindergarten. We pull a mailing list of parents getting ready to send their kids to middle school, and parents getting ready to send their kids to high school. And then those flyers are disseminated via that mailing list.
To a target-rich environment.
Correct.
Okay.
Right. There's also a series of newspaper ads that go along with that. There's a series of radio ads that go along with that. There are open house events that are conducted. This year, at the middle school level, for example, the principals went out to the elementary schools and talked with the different parent groups there to promote the middle schools and answer questions about what we offer. There's also activities that take place at the school level. The schools themselves send out mailings. The schools themselves have contact with parents. And so this time of year, there's just a variety of activities that go on. We utilize our website to encourage enrollment. We utilize the parent portal. We had a piece in the Budgeteer as part of our community newsletter that goes out quarterly. We have information that's in our district newsletters that go out to staff and parents. Again, just any communication venue at our disposal, and with the resources that we have, we make use of it.
So are you excited about what we're doing?
I think so. I think, you know, for many years, we've talked about enrollment. We've brought people together. We've had discussions. We've tried different things. What we've never really done is a more formal survey in order to gather that information, so I'm kind of interested to see what comes of that.
I've talked to several principals who've had their kindergarten roundups or in the process of, I've talked to middle school principals, or principal who had their community day, and I know Chairperson Seliga Ponco was at the Woodland one a couple of weeks ago and was overly impressed with it and talked in great detail about how successful it was, but...
That's what you need to do, though.
Yes, exactly. And that's what we all need to be doing, so...
Absolutely, yes.
So, you know, it sounds like we have many, many facets in place that are moving ahead to regain the market share that we've talked about that has slipped. And we're working towards that. Do you have any preliminary indication that we're seeing some numbers come back? Now, talking to middle school principals, she mentioned that she spoke with several families who had chosen alternate forms of education, who are now very seriously considering Woodland next year as their choice. And have we heard that from other principals or other staff members, or have you heard that from folks?
Well, in the conversations that I've had with people, there does seem to be an interest in the new buildings and the newly updated buildings. The people who have seen the information about what will be inside of the buildings, not just the fact that it'll be modern facility, that it'll be state-of-the-art, that we'll have modern teaching tools, but the fact that, you know, we offer all of these wonderful scholarship opportunities, that we have a great, great music program, which is something that not all school districts or schools can offer to the same degree that we do. The fact that we have honors courses that you can take and earn college credit in school, again, not all schools offer that. People who have seen these items have responded very positively to that. So I think as we continue to promote what we have, as we continue to, as an organization, be more forthcoming with all of the positive things that we offer students, as we become proud of what we do and proud of what we offer, and not hesitant to tell people about it, I think we can see, I think we'll see some good things happen.
So let me ask you a question. Do you have a number in mind of how many students? Just, all of these, all these positive, you know, and you're right, there are many, many positive things that are happening within our schools.
Just a ball.
So do you have a ballpark? I mean, what if...
Are you reading the witness of...
Yes, I am.
This would be on a later agenda, wouldn't it?
Yes, it will be. Thank you for noticing. If Katie Kaufman were to say, the measures that we've put in place are successful because we've attained this many additional students, what would you see that number to be?
You know, it wouldn't necessarily be a number. What I, at minimum, would really like to see is the projected decline be less than we projected, at minimum. That we would be able to say at the beginning of the next school year, the decline is less than we projected. Now, ideally, you know, what would be the magic wand, absolutely blow-your-mind, wonderful, is if we didn't see any decline at all, if it was actually more students. That's the way I would look at it.
So, I'm not going to be critical of that, but so status quo is okay. I mean, you know, I see this as the opportunity for us to grow. I'm not looking at these measures that we're putting in place to be status quo or to maintain. I'm looking at it as the opportunity to expand our market share, as we've talked about. So my hope is, is that, you know, conservatively, we see 100 additional students and hopefully more than that, because, I mean, now is that time. Now is that time that we are, we are creating a concentrated effort. We're recognizing that we need to talk to people that have left, and we have principals that are calling. We've talked about even potentially going door-to-door and talking about what we have to offer. So, I mean, this is maybe the one time in the history of ISD 709 where we're saying, enough is enough. And we're going to do everything we can to attract students back to the schools because of the wonderful opportunities we have. So I certainly hope that, at the very minimum, that we stay status quo, but certainly we see an opportunity for growth. So thank you for all your efforts on bringing all this multifaceted marketing together to create that opportunity, so.
I hope that everybody who works for the Duluth Public Schools is able to take a look at all of the wonderful things we do. I mean, like any organization, we have challenges. Every organization faces challenges. It doesn't matter if you're a school district or a city. It doesn't matter if you're a for-profit business. It doesn't matter if you're a not-for-profit business. All of them have challenges. It's all in how you deal with the challenges, but it's also in having pride in what you do and being able to go out and talk to people in a positive way about what you do and getting other people excited about what you do. And... And I've been with the Duluth Public Schools for several years, working in the superintendent's office. I see everything that goes on. I know everything that goes on. I know what the challenges are. But I also know there's just... There's so much to be proud of in this school district. And everybody who works for this school district should be proud of what they do for kids and what they do for the community and what they do for our families.
Thank you, Katie. Appreciate that. Member Glass, you had...
Two quick questions.
Sure.
Katie, I would be very interested to know if the population of your survey valued summer programs? If that was an attraction that would get kids interested in middle schools or high schools? If they actually started in the summer rather than walking in the door in the fall? If that would be an interesting or something that would be doable in terms of part of the questionnaire?
I think the goal of the survey would be, if at all possible, to identify something that we would be able to do that would make us more attractive. Something that we're not doing, but that we would be able to do.
Sure.
Perhaps that might be one of them.
That's one of the things I had in mind. And would it be possible for the board to get a copy of the final questions when you're done with?
Oh, absolutely, yes. Yeah. In fact, you know, because we're paying for it, it will be a public document. I imagine everybody will get a chance to look at it.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Member Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I want to emphasize again how important this is. My personal feeling is, is that with action like this, we had 350 WADM reduction here this year. That caused a lot of problems. Big part of the budget deficit that we're looking at next year is, again, because of the further projected deficit or reduction in students. And my personal feeling is with the teachers and the administration working together is so good that I personally, I think we can turn that around. And I think it's absolutely critical. A couple cautionary notes that I want to give. When I was campaigning, actually, Member Casper and I campaigned together quite a lot. Some of the stuff we heard was kind of scary from people. And it's absolutely imperative that we keep this trend going, that people go door-to-door, that the teachers get out there and the administration gets out there and literally talks with the people, because there is a lot of dissatisfaction out there. There's still... That question aside, we have a lot of healing to do in this community. And one thing that I think that we can do most effectively is that I think that we... What we're doing with the handouts that Member Casper and I showed, the group that we've been presented by the teachers, that is how we're gonna do it. I do have concerns about the market research. I think that we're gonna get much bigger bang for the buck by actually having our teachers and our students and the parents going out and doing this. And I do have a concern that part of this money is indicated to be spent for finding ways to also do market research on a possible operating levy. And we already have a community which is concerned. If we start pushing some of this stuff down their throat, it's gonna push back on us. And so, I do have that concern I wanted to put to you, that I think that that's... That will backfire if we don't do... If we aren't extremely, extremely careful and be completely impartial at this point. I don't... You know, I haven't seen that. So, but again, thank you for your effort. And I think particularly, the thanks to all the teachers, students, and parents out there that are the ones that are gonna turn our student reduction around. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And let's go on to item 1C. And that's Member Johnson.
Some of the stuff on the bullying. And Superintendent Dixon, I know we talked a lot about this at our committee meeting. I'd actually like to have kind of seen a little bit of presentation by that. And if... Could you give a real brief rundown of what we're doing? And I could add a little bit to that, because we really did have a good discussion. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but just a couple of the highlights of what we're doing, so the people out there in TV land know that we take this very seriously. Is that asking too much? Just a five-minute talk, not a lot? And I've got a couple of comments to add, too.
The piece on bullying, I think, first of all, our first and foremost is to help identify what bullying is. And I think that's what you were talking about. And so, what we're trying to do is do an awareness campaign, starting with our adults to have a conversation about that. And then, replicating that conversation with the students throughout the district. We were looking at a survey to collect some basic information and then taking them through the process and then seeing, over time, how that changes. So, it's kind of a baseline year for us. The idea, we started, and again, some community partners helped develop a video. Some of you've seen it's been also used in the community and other venues and actually was given to all school districts, all schools, actually, in the Arrowhead region. It was a video called "Starting the Conversation," because that's really what it's about. And the idea here is, what we did with the adults was really, in our schools, all of our adults saw the video together. And then, we asked them a couple of questions about what they saw in terms of happening for students in those areas and asking about how they... What they saw relative to interactions of adult-to-adult bullying. We're gonna repeat that this month, the end of this month, with our students. In fact, we have a principals' meeting tomorrow. We've been putting out a lot of the information in the packet you received. Sue has worked hard to figure out a way to... On the survey, to make sure that it's... We can... And Keith and Technology, that we can scan it, so we can collect the information in a hurry. So, toward the end of the month, the schools are signing up with different times, so that they're not on the same day, because we don't have enough of the videos for every classroom in the district. And we need to consolidate. In addition, if the school needs extra support from students, we've had high school students do a lot of work on this, and they'd like to go down and help with this at the middle school and at the elementaries and other staff as well, if the school needs extra support. And what we're planning to do is show the video at our secondary schools and then do the survey, show the video, and then have conversations about some student questions that have been designed that are part of your packet as well. And right now, we're working on the elementary piece, too. I met with three of the elementary principals yesterday and Sue to try to simplify an elementary survey. We've been talking about sort of what grade levels that the video might be appropriate. And I think we're gonna try some different models there. We worked with Voyagers this year, and I need to have them come and do their skit this year on bullying and then use that as the basis for the conversation in the elementaries. So, between now and the end of the year, we will have completed it with all staff. We will have completed it with all of our students. Some of our principals have actually run this with their... I did it at the district-wide parent advisory board meeting as well. And some of the schools are now... Their parents have asked to do it with a parent group in their own building. So, we're starting to branch out with those parent groups as well. So, that's kind of where we are right now.
Thank you. Member Johnson? Oh, you know what? Can I go on to Student Representative John?
Hi. I'm part of the Duluth East Exec Board, and we did a program on bullying. And we had a few seminars where we had... We invited some kids to, you know, talking in a group. And it seems very similar to this, the type of program that you've assembled, I suppose. But the problem with that was that it was only a few students came. It was basically by invitation. And I think that the students that really needed to see this type of program either didn't want to go or weren't brave enough to go to this type of program. Is this what you're proposing? A mandatory-type program for all the schools?
Yes. What we would do is shorten every classroom.
Okay.
And then, go through the questions, so we can get that conversation started. We then planned... Would like to start to simplify this and have sort of identify what it is. You know, that teasing is a form of bullying. Name-calling is a form of bullying, because I think a lot of adults and students don't recognize it as bullying. And then, we hope to be able to put up a set of posters in each building after that, so you can start seeing those messages. And then, also, I think that the idea... Really, bullying is in three forms. It's really verbal, physical, or the internet-type cyberbullying. And I think to start to identify that, but then to start identifying, what do you do if you're bullied? What are some strategies? And make them pretty simple, too, so you don't go through a book and say, "I gotta figure out what I got to do," that it's commonplace. We've come up with four or five major strategies that, if you find yourself in that situation, that you can respond. I have to tell you, I have just received... It's been amazing, the number of personal letters. They're gut-wrenching to read from people in the community about instances of bullying. Now, once you start the conversation, that's what happens. But some pretty incredible, just personal stories. I just received one from actually two teachers who work in the district and what happened to their child. And it's just been... It's really been gut-wrenching for me to hear some of the stories. So, I've just received a lot of personal letters and calls relative to this topic.
And also, if the survey does project a needed change in the policy of the school district, would that be added to the current harassment policy? Or would it be separate as bullying?
You are also correct. The policy speaks to harassment. And I think what we want to do is change the policy now to represent bullying in the forms that are in this process that we're gonna go through. So, you're right. We do need to update the harassment and identify... It's interesting to have a harassment policy that never speaks to bullying specifically.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Johnson?
Yes. Mr. Dixon, thank you for your comments. And also, Marcus, thank you for that. I just want to emphasize again to people here, when we think of bullying, we just think of guys out in the playground, you know, beating up somebody. And, you know, there's a lot more than that, as Mr. Dixon said. And one of the things that I wanted to emphasize that... And I think the students emphasized at the student for the future meeting last, one that was sexual... This kind of activity is sexual harassment and also gay bashing. And that is not acceptable, and we want to make sure that people emphasize that as well. And I think it's very, very important. I do have an issue here that I do want to bring up with the board. And as Mr. Dixon said, we gotta start the conversation. And I am gonna start the conversation with this statement. It is one, "The February 15th board meeting was about one of the best bullying examples by adults that anyone could see. And we were promoting anti-bullying. We have to look at ourselves." People in the city, I've seen, I got many, many comments from people saying that this board is the bullying board. I would suggest that everybody review the last meeting on DVD, as I did today. You will find an appalling amount of very unacceptable bullying behavior, including eye-rolling, laughing, side-conversations going on almost continuously, loud conversations going on, and one member's have the floor to speak. In addition to what was said, in doing the DVD, you will find the worst possible body language that I've ever seen. And you people see it all the time. Couple examples. When I was speaking, many times when I was speaking... Yes, I speak a lot. After being duly recognized by the chair, and I had the floor, I was interrupted by the chair. I quit counting it 20 times. I put them down. How many times was I being interrupted by the chair? I quit counting it 20 times. In addition to this being a classical and repeated bullying behavior, this is a violation of our Robert Rules of Order, page 371, line 2528, which states, "A member has been assigned the floor and has begun to speak. He cannot be interrupted by another member or the chair." Another example was at 8:07 on the DVD. When I had the floor and was debating the vote on negotiation procedures of item 3A2 in the business committee... Business committee. Members Wasson and Cameron were so loud in the talking behind while I was on the floor that you can hear... Clearly hear them say through... On the DVD, through my mic, saying this, "Tom, you must correct him. Tom, you have to do something." But incidentally, neither Member Cameron nor Wasson spoke when they had the opportunity. Instead, Member Casper spoke for them. And you should see their body language. I would suggest anybody to review the DVD. The body language is absolutely classic bullying behavior. This is unacceptable behavior by this board or any board. We have to start cleaning our act. Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to 1D. Great. Yeah, that's where we are. Member Casper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to request, at our next Education Committee meeting, if we could extract one portion of the Duluth Academy model, and that is the online learning opportunity. So, if we could have a discussion on what we're currently doing and some of the potentials to enhance that, recognizing that, as part of our market analysis, we've recognized that kids are choosing online opportunities and leaving the district for it. My hope is that we can build a program that offers that within the district as a way of, again, working towards attracting those kids back. So, I'm asking for it as a consideration. So, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Member Casper. I think we are ready to vote on the entire Education Committee report, except for the resolution that we had. So, all those in favor of the Education Committee report, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. That carries unanimously. All right. We're gonna move on to the Human Resources Committee. Member Cameron, you would do that for us, please?
Members of the board, while we're changing quickly, if you might... Could I add one piece? I forgot under... I wanted to mention under Superintendent Report.
Sure.
And I was thinking about Stacy's comments tonight. I did want to let you know that I have been at the Legislature a lot the last week and will be again this week. Thought I was gonna have to go to Dave. May need to be there tomorrow. It's kind of one of those on the spur of the moment. But I have been at the Legislature. There's been a lot of legislation introduced, really specifically around Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Duluth, relative to integration dollars and compensatory dollars. I did testify last week on both of those items. Actually, there was legislation introduced that was today and later in the week on the PEAP, actually, the Public Employee Program, you've heard talked about here. And just want to let you know, I'll keep you updated. The one on compensatory and integration was pretty interesting. I mean, it's really all the rest of the state looking at three school districts. You know, it's that old saying, "Unfortunately, when the swamp dries up, the animals look at each other differently." And with less and less funding, suddenly, everybody's testifying against us, fellow superintendents and everyone else, asking that they reduce the funding in compensatory and integration dollars to our school district. The actual proposal on integration was to reduce us by $75, $800,000, from 2.1 million to 1.3 million that we testified on last week. And we're seeing the same kind of things on compensatory. So, just thought I'd let you know that things are pretty rugged right now at the Capitol relative to cities of the first class. I don't know why this is a year to pick on Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Duluth, but it has become that at the Capitol. There was actually a bill introduced that was on the floor last night at 5:00 PM that said Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Duluth, if a school... If a student was failing, they could go to a private school within Duluth, and we would have to send a voucher for the amount of money to that school that we actually receive. Only three district... School districts were mentioned again, Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Duluth. So, I mean, talk about a direct move away from public education and giving public money to private schools. And that was actually something else that was talked about. So, we're really under the gun down there right now on many different fronts. Just thought I'd let you know that's going on. So, I'm doing everything I can to protect our integration dollars and our compensatory dollars. And we'll see how it turns out. But Stacy, thanks for your comments.
Superintendent, may I ask a question based on some of your comments?
Superintendent, may I ask a question based on some of your comments? Providing a voucher to a student from a failing school, is that part of No Child Left Behind? It seems like I've heard that before.
You know, it is. I think what was unique to me was that you would simply, if you're going to do that, why didn't you do it as a statewide thing? Why do you select three school districts? Again, why do you focus on the three of us? So.
This is the Human Resources Committee report for Tuesday, March 15. Item 1 is staff report, and they are all action items. Under Certified Appointments, there are two. Certified Co-Curricular, 28. Certified Extensions, there is one. Five Certified Leaves, two Certified Long-Term Subs. Five Non-Certified Leaves. Did I miss one? Yes, I did. There are three non-certified appointments, five non-certified leaves, and one non-certified recall, three non-certified resignations, one non-certified retirement, one non-certified suspension, one non-certified temporary decrease, and one non-certified temporary. And I am going to move those action items for approval.
Okay. Member Cameron has moved these action items. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Wasson. Is there any discussion? Member Johnston?
Yes, I'd like to discuss items 2A, B, and C. And item 3A.
Member Johnston, we're just, remember, we're just doing number one so far. We haven't gotten there.
Pardon me.
Okay. All right. Can Member Grover, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, I guess, ask a question because I'm not sure that this is what happened, but when, I always compare my, as you know, Tim Swirsky, I always compare my final HR agenda to what was originally sent out. And I don't think I saw, and this would actually be Mr. Dudley's area, the non-cert appointments, the three, I don't think I saw those in the original packet, and I guess I would just appreciate it if those things be called to our attention as changes. I don't have any problem with them, of course, but.
I did notice that today also. I was making a comparison with the report that we brought or sent out before. I think it had something to do with the formatting on it, where it dropped off of here, because it is identical to what we send over, it goes over electronically.
It's just accidentally omitted from.
For some reason, I think the way that the page breaks went, it dropped off. We'll have to check that, but I did notice that.
Okay, so you're still going to continue your practice of.
Yes.
Which is, which you've been.
But I did notice that until tonight.
Which you've been very diligent about, and I really appreciated that because it saves me the trouble of the comparison, but I just did it kind of at random and son of a gun, you know, so, thank you, Tim.
Okay, thank you, Member Grover. Okay, let's vote on the number one, Human Resource Action Items. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. All right, Member Cameron, go ahead to the next item.
Okay, item 2, there are three action items, and I'm going to take them separate. 2A is an individual contract for William Gronseth, our Assistant Superintendent, and I'd like to move that for approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Seconded by Member Wasson. Okay, Member Johnston, you have a question?
Yes, I'd like to have, I have a discussion on all three of these. Should I lump those together, or that would be okay? Unless I can do them individually, but speed it up and lump them together. My concern is, I don't have a concern with the people. That's, we have quality people here. I am concerned about our budget. The budget, and these employment agreements have a 1% increase. It doesn't sound like a lot of money, but it is a lot. And we're looking at a $6 million deficit this year. A large part of that deficit is from employee salary increases from the year before, which we'll be talking about in a little while here. I think that it's important that we, as a community, look at this. And I wish I could give all the money I could. These are quality people, I have no question about any of that at all, but we do have a limited amount of money. Money doesn't grow on trees. And again, a big part of our deficit is because of employee salaries. And I'm going to introduce a resolution on both of these, if you want mine, Madam Chair. And the resolution is as follows. Whereas the school district provides health and hospitalization coverage with almost no employee copayment at the expense, at no expense to the employee, whereas the school district provides dental coverage with employee, with almost no employee copayments at no expense to the employee, whereas the school district provides dental at no employee copayments at no expense to the employee, whereas the school district provides life insurance, again, at no expense to the employee, whereas the above benefits are much higher than other cities, state, federal government, and private workers receiving benefits, whereas the school district has a $6 million deficit, which is 6% of our budget, whereas the state of Minnesota has a $5 billion deficit, which is 16% of its budget, and is already delaying payments to our schools, whereas the property taxes levied in Duluth schools are among the highest in the state. Therefore, Assistant Superintendent, the CFO, Executive Director of Business Services, and the Public Relations Coordinator, pay schedule will continue as for the years 2010, 2011.
Point of order.
Part of the agenda was the three other items, A, B, and C. And if you want me to make this a motion or not, call it a resolution, I will gladly change the verbiage to resolution, if that would make you feel better, because we do have a motion, we do have motions on the floor. We have discussions here, and I obviously have a right, since it's on the agenda, to have a discussion and to amend that motion. If the Chair would prefer that I.
Yes, I think you can have an amendment to the motion.
Okay, well, then I would amend the motions that are presented here as to what I just said. Second. And I can second that.
Okay, hold on a second. Member Johnston, we only had the one item, letter A, 2A. So maybe.
I asked the Chair if I could do three at a time, and I will do, I will repeat this for three times if you'd like, but to speed things up, I think we can do it all at one time.
Save the time. Okay. Go ahead. So you have that in writing for?
Yes, I do, and I will give this to the Secretary when we're done at the meeting. I can give it to you, the Chair, if you would like.
Okay, Member Grover, you will need that, too. Right?
A point of order. A point of order.
Okay, Member Johnston?
Yes, the point of order is that I'm asking the Chair for a question. The Chair is speaking on the side with another member. That is not acceptable. If the Chair does not know how to run a meeting, she can open up her discussions to the whole board, not another member.
Yes, thank you.
That's a point of order, and that has to be responded to.
It was a clarification, because I'm not exactly sure, because we were doing the three, and I was thinking there was only one motion. So I'm just trying to make sure that I'm doing this right.
Well, again, my point of order is that you're having side conversations and not involving the group. And if you're having questions about what my point of order is, about what my motion is, ask me, not Member Grover.
Member Johnson, I was just asking if you needed to have that, and if it was written, if he has to write it down and have a copy of that. That's.
I offered to give you, the Chairperson, a copy, as well as the Secretary a copy. Is there some problem with that?
No, no, I just would like it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't want side conversations going on when I have the floor. And if you don't know how to rule on a motion, ask me, or we ask the group here how to rule on a motion.
Member Johnston, this was an amendment to a motion, correct? Not a motion, it's an amendment.
That's exactly correct.
Right, right. Okay, should we, oh, Member Cameron, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to say, I think it's appropriate for the Chair to consult with the clerk on Robert's Rules, if she doesn't quite understand.
Thank you, because I'm still getting some of this. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to, an amendment to the motion.
With a second.
With a second. And what was the final number that you said? Because I.
The public, the Assistant Superintendent, CFO, Executive Director of Business Services, which is item B, and the Public Relations Coordinator, item C. Pay schedule will continue as for the years 2010, 11.
Okay, because I missed that part. I wasn't quite sure what you had said.
Those motions have not been made.
Yes, and those motions have not been made. So let's do this, vote on this amendment then, okay?
And it would be an amendment to the.
It would be an amendment to the first one, letter A. So let's, Member Johnston?
You're supposed to ask if there's any debate on it. There's a motion, there's usually a debate.
Okay, with an amendment. Don't we want to vote on it first?
No, you, there is a debate on.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Okay, not debate, discussion. Go ahead.
Well, discussion and debate, whatever happens, somebody wants to call it. So the Chair is supposed to ask the group, is there any discussion or debate on?
I called on you, Member Johnston. You have your lead up.
No, I don't have any discussion on this at this point. I think I said it quite plainly in that, so I think it's quite clear what my intent is here.
Member Cameron?
I will not be supporting any amendment to either of these contracts, and unless we have a discussion about freezing salaries for every employee of this district, including looking at furloughs for other employees, I will not support signaling all three employees of this district to freeze their salaries.
Thank you, Member Cameron. Member Grover?
I am in agreement with Member Cameron.
Thank you. Member Johnston?
I would be in agreement with that as well, but why aren't we having those discussions? We have a $6 million deficit, and nobody's talking about the biggest cost. That's why I'm bringing this up, is so we can have a real debate. Either we're going to be cutting teachers, or we're going to be cutting salaries. What does the community, and what should the teachers and administration want to do? We, as a board, should be having this debate. And I'm trying to start that debate, since I can't start it any other way.
Thank you, Member Johnston. Member Grover, you want to say one thing?
I don't know if it's worth pointing out that we already have a properly passed and executed and signed DFT contract for the next, for the two-year period beginning 7/11. So I think that supports, and as well as our principals unit, I think that supports what Member Cameron expressed.
Thank you, Member Grover. Member Glass?
I would like to build on the comments of the two board members who suggested that we ought to consider freezing salaries if that's, if that would broaden the impact and save $2 million, at least for one year's time. That would keep us from drawing out of the reserve fund for $2 million, if we want to keep the teachers that are so valued by this community. We have that, that option is one of the trade-offs. We have that as the second largest piece of the deficit coming from the board's own generation of its salary increases. The largest piece comes from the transfer of money out of the general fund that hasn't been discussed yet. Those two pieces alone add up to the totality of the deficit. So if we're not going to talk about the two most largest contributors, then we're just wasting our time, and we're going to be chopping valuable programs when we should be dealing with the root cause of the problem. So I'd be willing to amend the motion to broaden it to consideration of freezing salaries everywhere.
Second that motion.
Well, wait, wait a second. This is an amendment to an amendment.
It can be done.
Okay.
You can go three levels of amendments.
Okay, did we have to vote on the First Amendment?
No.
Or no, we can just do that? Okay. All right, Superintendent Dixon?
I don't even know where to start. I think it was clear, and again, next week's meeting, I'll have additional legal counsel, or not, that they're not here tonight, to clarify that we have legal standing contracts with the principals and the teachers' union for a 1% increase. I do want to correct, however, Mr. Glass, when you say $2 million, 1% for all employees in this district, all employees, adds up to $525,000. That was on the budget sheet that you received, showing revenues and expenses, and the new expense for employees for 1% was $525,000, not $2 million. Okay? Now, $525,000 is $525,000. But I will tell you also, I've done some checking on furlough opportunities, and again, that is complex in that you can ask for people to volunteer and make a donation, but in our case, the way we're structured, we could do it for, there's a way to do it for non-certified employees, okay, which we could consider, but there's not a way to do it for the certified employees. Because under the tenure law, people on tenure, tenure is an individual right, not a collective right. And so you can't, a group cannot voluntarily, according to what I heard from legal counsel, and they'll be here next week, you can't legally ask a, we couldn't go to the teachers' union and say, "We'd like you to take a freeze," because under the, or the principals, under the tenure law, they can't make that decision because it's an individual right, not a collective right. I don't pretend to be a lawyer, but that's why, when I asked legal counsel, that was the advice I had received, okay? But we have executed contracts, the board voted, they have been signed, and we will move forward with those contracts as signed.
Thank you, Superintendent Dixon. Member Cameron?
Just a quick comment, Superintendent, and I don't pretend to be a lawyer either, but in those discussions with legal counsel, do ask about a reduction in salary for your certified staff, as well as for teachers? Because with the bargaining unit, employees, I believe that if you go back to the table, even with a signed agreement, that you can have a memorandum of understanding for a certain amount of mandatory furlough days. That's what we did. And certified professionals took a reduction in salary for a year to compensate for the furlough days that they weren't or couldn't take because of contract language.
I think members of the board, to suggest, though, to just make motions and say, "We're going to freeze salaries," or do those things, all these have legal ramifications. You can't do it without a real thorough understanding of what that means for us as a board, and that's all I'm suggesting.
Thank you, Superintendent. Member Johnston?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Point well taken. We do have to look at legal ramifications, but I'd like to add a little bit of discussion on the other side. I was down at the Minnesota School Board Association Leadership Conference, where Tom Stinson, the state economist, gave a talk. It was not a talk that any of us wanted to hear. I believe I gave most of his presentation to members that weren't there. And he is very clear that the days of unlimited government spending are gone. I think we've all read about how we've got several states in the Union that are on the verge of bankruptcy. Minnesota itself has a six, still a $5 billion deficit, which, as I've already pointed out, is 16% of that. This is not something, and Tom said, "This isn't going to go away soon. Economists call it the new normal." It isn't just state economist Tom Stinson, it's Wall Street, everybody says that is the way it is, from Washington down to St. Paul, and I think it should be down to Duluth. We should be having these discussions, as much as I dislike this. We all want to make more money. Yes, the teachers deserve more money than they make, of course they do, but we don't have the money. The money tree, as Tom Stinson said, the money tree has quit growing. And when we look at our benefits compared to other government employees, we're way, way over the average. And we do have to have this discussion, and I hope we continue having it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have an amendment.
To the amendment.
To the amendment, which is to freeze all pay. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? No. So it fails unanimously. Okay, and we have another amendment.
No salary increase for.
Which, okay, no salary increase for letter 2A. Correct. Okay. Member Johnston?
Just a point of information, again, we could go 2A, B, and C. Just a point of information, again, we could go 2A, B, and C if this motion is doing that. It's up to you. We can do this vote three times.
Okay, so it is for A, B, and C. I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
I'm just trying to make it go faster here.
So this is for all three of them? Okay.
If that's okay with the board?
We can't amend something that hasn't been moved in.
Okay, so.
My advice would be, I don't think after we read it, but I would say, you just got to do A, and you come to B, we know what it is, and say ditto, and have it, move the amendment.
That's acceptable to me, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's vote on the amendment to letter A, which would be no percent increase, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all those, Member Johnston, you have?
Disgusted.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Okay, that.
I'm abstaining from that vote.
Okay.
Can't. Five, zero.
One, five, zero. Okay. Okay, now we're going to go back to the original motion of letter 2A, the individual contract. I got that right? Original motion. Okay.
And there'll be an amendment to that now?
No.
Oh, 2A, I'm sorry.
We already voted on the amendments.
2A, yep. So we're going to vote for 2A, the original motion. All those in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, that carries 6-1, with Member Johnston.
I'm abstaining.
Five, one, zero.
Okay, Member Glass abstaining from that vote. Okay, now we're going to move on to 2B, the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Member Cameron, thank you. Okay, I'm getting a rhythm here. Go ahead.
I'd like to move 2B, which is the individual contract for William Hanson, our CFO and Executive Director of Business Services.
Second. Okay, thank you. That's been moved by Member Cameron, seconded by Member Wasson, and now we have ditto for the same, the First Amendment, right? Which would be no salary increase.
Yeah, that's an amendment for me, then, to have the resolution as it is, but the pay schedule will stay the same as 2010, 2011. I think that should be similar.
So that's the amendment?
Amendment.
Okay, do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment to have no contract increase, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No.
No.
Okay, that fails 2-5, with Members Johnston and Glass voting for it. Okay, we're going to vote on the 2B, the original contract now, the original motion for Mr. Hanson. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so that carries.
Five, zero.
Five, one, zero.
Five, zero, sorry.
Okay, with Member Johnston voting against it, and Member Glass abstaining. Okay, Member Cameron?
Okay, I'd like to move to C, approval of the individual contract for Kathleen Kaufman, our Public Relations Coordinator.
Second. Okay, that's been moved by Member Cameron, seconded by Member Wasson. That's 2C, the individual contract for Ms. Kaufman. And, Member Johnston, go ahead.
As I amend that, as I did the other ones, to amend the latter part, that the pay schedule would be, stay the same as 2010, 2011.
Okay, so that's an amendment. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, so moved the amendment, you've got that, Melinda? Moved by Member Johnston, seconded by Member Glass. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of a pay freeze amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Say no?
No.
That fails 2, you voted for that? Okay, Member Glass and Member Johnston voting for it, and the rest of us voting against it. Okay, we'll go to the original motion of 2C. All those in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, so that carries 5, 1, 0. You've got the members, Member Johnston and Member Glass abstaining.
No.
Well, Member Johnston voting no.
Okay, and Member Glass abstaining. Sorry, thank you. Okay, Member Cameron, you want to finish?
Item 3 is the informational item, which involved a closed session for negotiations parameters, which was scheduled for this evening, March 15, 2011. And if I may, I'd just like to have a few moments just to make some comments here. That session ended early because one of our board members chose to have their individual tape recorder present and began tape recording this closed session. And I also feel the need to just talk a little about comments made about us being bullying certain board members. Tone of voice, perceived knowledge of one area over someone else is also a form of bullying. And I'm going to tell you, Chair Johnston, that I think that you use bullying tactics constantly. And one of the reasons why Chair, Member Wasson and myself didn't want to comment on some of the things you were saying, because we knew they were not accurate information, is because we didn't want to engage in a very long debate with you. I didn't run because of expertise of Robert's Rules. I don't think anyone here did. And you overwhelm us with your Robert's Rules. And to me, that's a form of bullying. I think that you bullied the Chair. I think that you have bullied Tim Grover, the previous Chair, and I think you bully the board. And we received a letter from three social work students at UMD, and I talked with Chair Soligo Panko tonight, and I said, "We need to recognize the letter." Not necessarily mention their names, but to recognize the letter and that we need to do a better job as role models for students in this, in this community. And you need to play your part. You cannot sit here and lecture us about rolling eyes, cutting you off, when I constantly see, just because your light is on, you have not been recognized by the Chair. So those same rules that you want us to follow, I'm asking that you follow them as well. And stop using your perceived knowledge of Robert's Rules to intimidate and bully.
Okay, is there any other?
I'm not through with the report. I just.
Oh, okay, okay.
As, so I did item 3, which was about the closed session, and item 4 is future items, and there are no human resource future items. And so now I'm questioning myself, do I move this entire report since I moved each individual action items? Okay, Madam Chair, I move the entire human resources report.
Second.
Madam Chair.
You know, honestly, I'm thinking that we already did everything. So I don't think there's anything left on the HR.
I was just making sure.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we've got that done. Member Johnston?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I would like to respond to, first on 3A. I think that when somebody's being bullied, either I can be run over by the boss, or else I can say, "Wait, there's something wrong here." Again, I would challenge anybody to look at the DVD, then you'll see who's being bullied and who isn't. I think Member Cameron has made a mistake, that when somebody talks back and has a discussion, that is not bullying, that's having, that's being a deliberative body. That's what we are, is a deliberative body. And if you can make fun of me about using Robert's Rules of Order, might, I would suggest a better tactic would be to follow the rules, including our bylaws, including state law, then we won't have to have this discussion, it's that simple. And if you call out a lecture, so be it. If you call out bullying, that's certainly a new definition of bullying, is to follow the rules and tell the truth. That's what I'm doing here. I'd like to comment on the closed session. Yes, I had a recorder in there because I wanted this recording, because nobody has a recording of it. I was accused at the last meeting of not remembering what occurred at the last meeting, that's the so-called parameter setting meeting, so I wanted to have record of it. I was accused of not having a good memory, even though I have all the documentation, what exactly happened in the last parameter setting, and it was not, was presented last time. That's why I had the recording. And again, to show the audience here, that me, as a school board member, has a right to have access to all meetings on this school, including this board, and have access to all information. If I violate that trust by violating a Data Practices Act, I am at fault, but having that is not a violation. Asking for information and documentation of what occurs is not a violation of anything, and that is my right as a board member. And I will continue recording whenever this, these sessions are closed, for no reason, incidentally. I, this, I was very clear with the board meeting, before the special session was called, I objected to that being a special session, because it was a violation of the Public Employees Labor Relationship Act to have such sessions enclosed and out of the public eye. And I will continue doing that, and I will record it, not release those recordings, but I will do it to record. So when people tell me I don't have a good memory, I will have documentation of that. Thank you.
Madam Chair, would you indulge me in asking Mr. Hanson a question?
Sure.
Bill, I customarily sit in the same place at most closed sessions. I was sitting in my usual spot tonight, which happens to be right in front of, a little bit to the side of the tape recorder. Did you not start the tape at the beginning of our closed session this evening?
I did start the tape as we were beginning the meeting, right before we went around and took attendance, yes.
Right, and that's standard procedure, is it not?
It is.
I mean, for those meetings that are required to be taped, we always do tape them.
Correct.
And would that, I know the tapes can't be released when they're discussing negotiation parameters until the current cycle with all bargaining units involved in that cycle is complete, is that correct? And then they're available for anyone to listen to, is that correct?
That's correct. They become, tapes from closed sessions become public at varying stages of time, depending on the type of meeting.
And in the interim, if anyone present at those board meetings, specifically board members, would want to refresh their memory by coming in and listening to that tape, that would certainly be allowable, don't you agree?
We would have the tapes available, certainly for board members, to come in and listen to in our building here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Grover. Mr. Hanson? Member Johnston?
Yes, to finish up that discussion, again, what I quoted here at this special meeting, I will quote again today, this is from the Minnesota School Board Association, most recent journal, journal from March, April, this has a column on inside cover by John Sylvester, who's the executive director. I talked to him today for about an hour. He gave me permission to use his name if I, if I thought it was appropriate. And that says, "Should board communications about public negotiations be held in closed sessions?" No, that's a violation of Public Employment Labor Relationship Act, Minnesota Statute 179 A dot 14. And that's why I brought that up. And then that is, again, he said I could use his name, even though I don't particularly like to. Again, I think this board would be a lot better off by telling the truth and following the law than trying not to.
We all understand the law and we all follow it. The reality is this, what we were doing tonight was setting strategy, which falls under the Public Employee Labor Relations Act. We do all, after you give a strategy, we do sit down with the groups and we do bargain in public. We also know that at that point, at times, our, some of our units could request to go to mediation, which is the strategy used quite often to close negotiations to the public. So we all understand the strategy and how that works. Fortunately, over the past number of years, we haven't had to close and go to mediation in the processes we've been using. So we all understand that. We understand that the meetings are held in public, both the employee groups and us, unless mediation is closes it. So what we're doing tonight is just asking for strategies, so when we start working with these groups to put together contracts to bring back to you, that we would have strategy on how to proceed. But we do clearly understand PELRA and how it operates.
Thank you, Superintendent. We're going to take a short, five-minute recess. We'll be back at nine o'clock. And everyone, please be mindful of the time. We have a lot of people waiting to speak. Thank you. Okay, everyone, we're going to get started. Oh, Member Grover, that's right, you are the Chair of the Business Committee. We kind of need you. So I am going to turn this all over to you to present the business report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 1 is our recurring reports, the financial, under the heading of Financial Report. The Financial Report, Approval of Payment Claims, Budget Revisions, Wire Transfers, Investment Transactions, Student Enrollment Projections, Fundraisers, Investments in School Children, or also known as donations to the school district. We have, under bids and quotes, RFPs in quotes, we have 2C, quote, 4066, home demolition at Grant. Recommendation is to approve a contract for $50,000. Policies and Regulations, 3A1 and 3A2 are the second reading of modifications to the annual meeting bylaw and the negotiating committee bylaw, respectively. Policy 3136 is item 3, Traveling and Out-of-State, suspension of that policy for some airfare arrangements by two employees. Contracts and change orders, we have no contracts, change orders are at Denfeld and East and Piedmont. Resolutions, I'll bypass for the moment. After the resolutions, we have informational items, the expenditure contracts signed by Superintendent Dixon or Mr. Hanson in Business Services. There are no revenue or other contracts. We have our monthly facilities management capital project status report submitted by Mr. Leiter, the Johnson Controls LRFP status report, change orders relating to the LRFP, and contracts signed in relationship to the LRFP, and school closing procedures and timelines. There was a discussion on these, on these processes and procedures, which will be moving forward. Madam Chair, I thought I'd go to the resolutions first, and with your concurrence, and as a courtesy to, I don't know if it's too late to be courteous, but, but Mr. Tofti, and, I'm sorry, the other two gentlemen, well, maybe Bob, if you can introduce them when you come up here. They were at Business Committee meeting. I apologize for forgetting your names, but this will be on resolution regarding issuance of aid anticipation certificates. And that is on page 59. And shall I move that first, and then we can have the presentation and discussion? Okay, this is a resolution providing for the issuance, sale, and delivery of $19,450,000 in general obligation tax and aid anticipation certificates of indebtedness, Series 2011A, prescribing the terms thereof, creating a debt service fund therefore, and awarding the sale thereof. Madam Chair, I move this resolution, which, I don't know, does it have a number somewhere here?
It's right in the front.
Where?
In the front of the business section.
Okay.
Oh, yep, right here.
No, go back there. Okay, thank you. I move Resolution B 311, 2863, March 15, 2011.
Second. Okay, that's been moved by Member Grover, seconded by Member Wasson, and if you would make a presentation, gentlemen, thank you.
Yes, Chair Soligo Panko, members of the board, just a reminder that you have an updated copy of the resolution in your packet. That was, again, the draft version that you had before. It's pretty close, but that's the actual version based on the numbers that have come in. And at this point, I'd like to invite Steve Pumper and Kent Johnson from PMA, as well as Bob Tofti from the Freiburger Law Firm here in Duluth, to come forward and continue making their presentation that was started at the Business Committee meeting last week, and apprising you of the results of the data that we and apprising you of the results of the data that we have available now for the sale of these certificates.
Thank you, Bill. Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Dixon, I'm Steve Pumper with PMA Financial. With me is Kent Johnson, and certainly you know Bob Tofti, who will be speaking on behalf of the resolution, awarding the sale of the certificates. I'd like to go over this packet with you tonight very briefly, some of the information specifically that I'll be speaking on. We went over in much more detail at last Monday's meeting, so I'll be a little bit brief on that, and let Kent speak more to the actual sale that took place. The pricing took place yesterday, and the sale was today as well, as long as you award the sale. The very first page, I just wanted to remind board members and certainly the community the reason that the Duluth School District is in the need to issue some certificates for cash flow borrowing. And the chart, if you look at that as well, talks about legislation. Certainly Superintendent Dixon was talking about some of the effects that's going on with compensatory aid and desegregation aid as well. But one of the pieces that the state has used to balance its own budget is by taking cash away from school districts and saying, kind of giving you an IOU, saying, "We'll give you that money later on." If you look at that chart, the state now is shifting state aid, giving the district 70% of the amount it should receive in one fiscal year, giving 70% in the current fiscal year, and delaying 30% to the next year. In addition, the state is also saying that 48.6% of your property tax, that they'll take that away from your revenue in the current fiscal year as well. So the net effect of all these shifts for the District of Duluth is that in July, you're going to have roughly a negative $20 million cash position, not a fund balance position, but cash position, when you would have had in previous years a $25 million cash surplus. So again, just because of when the state decides to give you your dollars, it's making a $45 million swing in the cash for the district. Therefore, we need to cover, or Duluth needs to cover roughly $20 million of a cash shortfall in July of this year. The next page that I indicated to you last week as well, says that Duluth certainly is not in a unique position, that this is affecting districts throughout the state. And so I put some comparative data. In last fiscal year, fiscal year 10, 154 districts issued certificates to cover cash flow borrowing needs, certainly based on the tax and state aid shift that happened. That was 46% of all districts in the state. This year, as of today's date, actually, 147 districts, not including Duluth, so you'll be at 148, have already issued certificates, which represents 44% of all districts, and we still have three more months yet to get through the rest of this fiscal year. So certainly, we would anticipate that number increasing. There also, again, are some districts listed on the bottom of the page, indicating some other districts, certainly a little bit larger in size, that compare to Duluth, and some of those dollar amounts that they are issuing as well. You'll see as high as a district like St. Paul issuing almost $79 million of certificates, and Anoka Henepin at 58. Again, I call out St. Cloud, just because I know that you compare yourselves often to St. Cloud, that issued $15 million this last September. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Kent Johnson, who's going to talk to you specifically about the sale of the bonds that will happen today.
Thank you. Per the specifications of the bid package that you looked at last week, the bonds actually went out to the public, or went out to the street yesterday morning, for indication bids. And what that means is that the bonds are kind of considered sold at the point that you take action tonight. So at the time that the resolution is actually approved, then those bonds would change hands. Money would then be received by the district. Those bonds have been spoken for, so they are, they have been accepted or been purchased. So again, after action tonight, those bonds would then be officially done. The next three pages in your packet will outline where those numbers came in at. As you recall, you looked at numbers that were very similar to this last week, and I'm happy to say that it came in a little stronger than what we were first looking at. The first page, and actually, page three in the packet, the total issue sources and uses, first thing you'll notice is that the bond issue size changed, and it was reduced to $19,375,000 because of a premium bid that was paid for the bonds. You actually received more money upfront than what you were actually even going to market with. The bondholders are willing to do that in this type of a market. Total cost, as it's related to the interest rate, as well as any cost of issuance, in total, came out to be $2,720 less than what you looked at last week. So in terms of an apples-to-apples, you came out better than what we first looked at. The next page is the actual debt service of this issuance itself. You'll pay interest, as you recall, on a tax anticipation portion, as well as an aid anticipation portion, the two of them are combined. So in total, the interest that would be paid is $139,125. The third page also includes the yield. The yield is really kind of the true number that we look at. The coupon rate is important, but it only ties into a portion of the overall picture that you, as a district, are looking at in terms of total expense. The yield actually dropped a little bit, again, versus what we were looking at last week. So on the shorter-term maturity, you're looking at 35 basis point yield, or .35%, and on the longer certificates, 50 basis points, or half a percent. The number that we like to really compare bid to bid with is down in the lower right-hand corner, under true interest cost, and that rate of .5807870 is the true interest rate that you, as a district, are paying in total for these certificates. The last page then answers the question, how does that compare to others that might be selling around the state at the moment? The top four issues, the Farmington School District, the Cyrus School District, Attica County 318, which is Grand Rapids, and the Metro Council, all had certificate or had issuances within the last month. And what's being outlined is really the 2011 and 2012 maturities. That's what we're trying to compare with. For comparison purpose, Farmington would be the closest in terms of the type of issuance that you had, so they could be looked at as virtually identical. They were also short-term certificate issuances. They were both credit enhanced per the state of Minnesota. So if anything would happen from the district's end of not being able to pay, the state would step in and make that payment. That's important for the bondholders, as they purchase the certificates. They were both short-term GO and limited notes, which is what you're selling. The market actually rose a little bit from then, and you can highlight that by looking at the six-month bond yield that is shown on the Farmington issue. It was 38 basis points. In yours, it moved up to 44 basis points. However, your total coupons and yields were lower. Your yields were better than what Farmington was showing. So again, you were looking at 35 and 50 basis points. Farmington was at 49 for the same maturity length as your short one. So all in all, you did quite well. You did better than anticipated. It is an interest expense, but again, very, very low cost of interest. With that, I'll turn it over to Bob Tofti, who will have questions about the resolution.
Madam Chair, could I ask a question to Kent?
Okay, go ahead.
Do you don't have it in here, the cost that we're paying you guys, or the cost of the bond, whatever you call that? Did I miss that? Or I'm hoping that went down as well?
On the first page, it's page, I think, three of the packet, the total issue sources and uses, does outline all of those fees under the uses of funds. You'll see the deposit to the actual operating fund of the $19,405,550. Total underwriter discount, which is the cost for the underwriter, $19,375. Financial advisor fee, which is what PMA is, at $10,000. Bond counsel fee, $7,500. Moody's Rating Agency fee, $6,100. And by the way, you did receive a MiG-1 rating, which is the top rating by Moody's for short-term debt. The rounding amount is bonds are issued in $5,000 increments, so when it doesn't add up exactly, that amount goes in to bring it to the next $5,000. That dollar will also go into your operating fund as part of the total proceeds, and then the paying agent fee of $1,500.
Okay. I'm trying to find this number. You indicated it was about $128,000 was the cost of the bond. That's the number I was talking about? Am I seeing that here or not seeing that here? Yeah, we had that discussion, I know. I forgot to bring my pack.
Members of the board, what you're referring to was the one-page document we had at our meeting last week, that also took into account the interest cost for the line of credit that you would be entering as well. We're not talking about that at this evening. Actually, I can talk briefly about that. We anticipated the district having to issue $6 million worth of line of credit issues this coming week, actually, this Friday. After talking with Bill, it looks like that number's going to be lower. Of that, the estimated interest cost for line of credit was almost $20,000, that is $128,000 total borrowing cost that we illustrated last time for you. Again, if we add the total cost of borrowing from what we presented last Monday to what we're awarding here tonight, your total cost of borrowing is $2,720 less.
Okay, Mr. Tofti, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Bob Tofti. I'm an attorney with Freiburger Buchanan. I'm serving as your bond counsel. And this issue before you is a resolution setting forth the aid and tax anticipation certificates as separate issues, as we discussed at the business committee meeting. You'll see that the information is now included as to the size of the issue and the purchase price, and the purchase price is in section two, at $19,433,103 for a par amount of $19,375, which is reflective of the premium that we discussed. The coupon rate is 1%, and you'll see that on page two. The remainder of the resolution sets forth the terms and conditions for payment, the funds and accounts, and payment provisions for those certificates. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them with regard to the resolution.
Thank you, Bob. This is kind of a procedural question, and this might be important, that we be sure we're doing this properly. This that we had at our places this evening ends with section 12, and I think there's supposed to be a section 13, which appears to be quite important, official statement, the chair and clerk authorized to certify blah, blah, blah. I assume that the original language of the official statement, section 13, wouldn't have changed?
That would not have changed.
Okay, I just want to, maybe I can just make it clear to board members that that is part of the resolution that has been moved and that is on the floor.
There's a page 14 that has the official statement, as well as the...
Right, and we do not have that in the material. That was actually put for action at our places this evening. So I just want to clarify that.
That is part of it.
That additional language that's in the board book we received over the weekend is included as part of this resolution.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Board members have any other questions? Member Glass?
There was a form also last week that we had to send into the state to register these. Has that been sent in, and do we have the state approval for that purpose?
That has been signed and sent into the state. I personally haven't received it back yet, but it typically would go to the state, get signed, as well as having the paying agent sign that.
So whose signatures were on that?
Mine.
Who was it?
That's correct.
Okay. This $19 million is the combination of two different delays that we are being told about. One is a state legislative delay that will generate the aid certificates, and the other one is the delay from the county, and that generates the tax certificates.
The tax certificates are based on your tax levy that you adopted last year. So you, as you know, receive tax payments twice a year, and you have monthly outflow of cash, as well as a portion of your taxes come from the state, which you heard have been withheld.
Correct.
So a part of that is from the tax levy, and a part is from the state aids. There's two different borrowing programs under the same statute, one for state aids, which are required to be paid within three months of the end of the fiscal year, and the taxes, which are required to be repaid within three months of the calendar year. And thus, that's why you have different, two different maturities.
Right. And so you're saying that the county payment is...
I'm not saying that the county payment is paid by statute.
Okay.
They're not delaying their payment, they're paying it on time.
But we need the money at a different time.
But you need the money at a different time to make your current payments.
So now, we've never had that problem in the past. Why do you think that's now going to be instituted? Is this something you think we're going to have to be doing every year?
Well, it has to do with what the legislature does to your cash flow payments and withholding of the state aids and the portion of their portion of the taxes. So it's this business where you would have had $25 million of cash, and now you're $20 million in the hole. So it's a state issue as to the payments and the timing of the payments.
Okay, now, one of the earlier speakers said there was a percentage of the assessed value that's going to be withheld from our local taxes. What was that about?
I'd be happy to clarify that. The taxes that you levied for, and again, in the District of Duluth, the non-debt taxes are roughly $11 million, and you receive those really in the spring and then in the fall. That's when your collections are. So roughly $5.5 million you would be getting in the spring of this year. You are going to get those dollars from your local counties. However, what the state will do is, the $5.5 million that you're going to get, they're going to deduct from the state aid that they would give you. So normally, you'd receive both county revenue and state aid revenue at the same time. But in order for the state to balance their budget, they're saying, since you're getting county revenue, we're going to shift that dollar amount, in your case, $5.5 million, and we're going to take it away from the state aid that we normally would be giving you.
So that'll be in addition to the...
To the 30%.
30%.
Yes, exactly. So all the dollars that you actually are having delayed are truly all coming from the state delaying their payments, but they're using the calculations for each district based on how much money they're getting from their tax revenue. And that's why it varies significantly from district to district. Those districts, especially districts that don't have an operating referendum at all, because all that's general fund money, that's not debt service money, they're not going to hit, they're not going to get hit as hard on the tax delay, because they don't have as much levy authority going forward for when the state's going to delay 48.6%, it just doesn't affect them as much.
So now, would we have to borrow this amount of money if we didn't transfer 4.5 million out of our operating funds for the debt service fund?
I can't answer that question for you.
We'd still have to borrow the same amount of money, basically. I don't know how many different ways I can explain it.
Well, if there's 4.5 million in the operating funds that you didn't transfer, you wouldn't have to cover that, would you?
And again, the board could vote not to make that transfer and increase the debt levy. You have that option. As you know, the Long Range Facilities Plan calls for about $4.5 million a year in property sales that will support the plan and reduce the taxes to the taxpayers. That's basically the, in addition, we have operating savings from closing buildings, because intuitively, when you don't have a building open, you reduce your costs associated with running buildings. And those are the transfers we're making over to the debt fund to reduce the debt levy to the taxpayer. Again, the issue here is well, well, well beyond what we're talking about for that amount. And the situation we're in is because of the actions taken through the state legislature with their cash situation.
Clearly, this legislature is giving us the rhubarb for their debt. And once they've cleared up their problem, then we should not be going into this particular practice of borrowing our money from the county tax assessor payment in the future if the state doesn't take that money, correct?
All things being equal, that would be correct.
Okay, cool. We'd certainly not want to set a... Okay, we'd certainly not want to set a bad precedent by doing this and encouraging them to continue to do that. That would be a bad way to do business. I mean, this costing us money, $126,000 to do this, and if we could figure out a different way to do it, did you consider the method of warrants instead of bonding, to use that different method of funding?
I would suggest that at an interest rate of 0.58 percent, I don't know how we could realistically do any better than that with any kind of debt.
What does our line of credit cost us?
The line of credit is running at about a 2.75 percent annualized cost.
So this beats that by a wide margin.
Over 2 percent, yeah.
Okay, very good.
And the only reason you're doing line of credit is you just didn't have the time that it took to go through the process of issuing this type of debt. So again, it's very short term, and line of credit by statute is only four to 45 day period of time.
But I'm still puzzled by the fact that there's less than half of the school districts that are doing this, 147 out of 337. Do you know that that's going to be filled in in the future?
Well, again, I can't speak for all 337, certainly, but the districts that we work with, I mentioned at our meeting last week, over 70 percent of them will be doing, they'll have to do something, because they're going to be in debt certainly by next January, if not this summer. And I'm sorry, and I want to be clear when I say in debt, they're going to be in a cash shortage position.
Sure.
Yeah, not necessarily a fund balance position, but a cash shortage position.
Very good.
In addition, a number of districts went a year ago, so when you talk about half that went this year, or 70 percent, we've already had a bunch go previous where we didn't go last year.
That is true, right.
Thank you. Member Casper?
I'm going to be supporting this, because I think it's absolutely necessary that if we're going to continue to pay our teachers into the near future and provide food for our children in our lunch programs, and on and on and on, but I'm going to ask that other board members in the very near future, as we're talking about something further in the agenda, to also approach it with an open mind, so, thank you.
Member Johnson?
Yeah, probably a question for you again, Steve, here to put you on the spot. Again, if I, looking at your chart here, talk about the property tax shift, again, I have that same question that Member Glass had, and so, again, humor me here, trying to see if I got it right here, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the state, we all know the state shifted this from the 10 percent withholding to, what, 30 percent, 40 percent?
30, no.
30 percent, and we hope we get that, so that's, we all know that, that's very sad, but unfortunate, but that's the reality here. Now, the property tax shift that you're talking about, again, I talked to the auditor's office this morning, they said there's no delays, and I think you confirmed there is no delays, this business as usual, we will get our money as we're supposed to from the county, which is, we better, they said that, yeah, there's no question of that, but you're saying that because we have a bigger tax levy that we're getting in, that the state then looks at that, and they have shifted more than other districts?
Well, dollar amount, it would be more. Every district is hit the same percentage-wise, 48.6 percent of your levy is being shifted, so the total dollar amount of your, and I want to be clear, of your operating funds of your life, so your general fund levy and your community education levy, those two pieces of every district, 48.6 percent of that total dollar amount will be taken away from state aid in this same fiscal year. So fiscal year 11, whatever that dollar amount means to any given district, the state will not pay that same amount in state aid. So for your district, it's roughly $5.5 million. If your community ed levy and your general fund levy was less than $11 million, let's say it was $5 million, then you'd have roughly $2.5 million taken away in state aid. So that's why it varies from district to district.
Okay, so you're saying we've got about an $11 million levy through the general fund, community ed?
Yep.
Those levies?
Correct.
So then, they're looking at that and saying, oh, you guys are well off, and we'll withhold, what percent again?
48.6.
Okay, now, that's different from the shift then, again, I'm trying to understand this.
Yeah, well, that's fair.
Please be patient with me here, because, okay, we got the 10 to 30 percent shift, but this is another shift.
Correct.
Okay, and what do they call that? What's that called?
It's called the property tax shift.
Okay.
The first one, the 70-30 is called the state aid shift.
Right.
And the 48.6 percent of your levy is called the property tax shift.
Okay, and that's got nothing to do with the county, that's got, the state looks at it and says, ah, you guys are getting all this money, therefore, we're going to pull some more out, so we're actually getting more than a 30 percent shift. That's the point you're making here, is that we've got this shift, in addition to the 30 percent, this other 40 percent of this levy that we have for general ed and special ed is thrown in there, so that's more than 30 percent shift.
Cumulda, for sure.
Yeah, well, when does that come out? Just a guess, you know, is it more like 40 percent then, if you throw that other money?
Yeah, I'd rather put the math to it and not guess at the number.
Yeah, just a lot. Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate that clarification.
Okay, let's see, Member Grover, do you want to continue with this? Are we ready to vote on this? I think we are, no more discussion? Okay, we have a resolution on the aid anticipation certificates on the floor, it's been, see, the motion was made by Member Grover, and who seconded it? Member Wasson. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion, resolution carries unanimously. Okay, Member Grover, can you continue?
Yes, Madam Chair, the next resolution is found on page 55. If I can find that myself here. And this is adoption of the considerations and investments for the fiscal year 2012 budget. Be it resolved by the Board of IST 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the attached considerations and investments for fiscal year 2012 budget as presented to the School Board be adopted. After I read the formalities at the bottom, I want to clarify what, how I'm reading, what I mean as by what I'm moving here, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, or anyone can correct me if that's not correct. I move Resolution B 3112862, March 15, 2011. My intent is to move the March 11 final reading, consider budget considerations and investments that we received the other day, I can't remember honestly which, when exactly we received The very top line is district administration reductions, preliminary recommendation, $286,000, and these figures were fleshed out. We got an email today from Mr. Hanson, which detailed the site administration reductions and the learning services restructuring reductions, or restructuring results, and with a balance of $45,000 yet to be determined out of learning services. So that is what I am moving, which I believe would be the starting point for discussion and revisions as the Board sees fit.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Member Grover, so it's been moved by you, and Member Wasson seconded it, and it was the one from today, correct? Yeah, the March 11 one, and then clarify.
It was clarified today, but it was, the final considerations were dated Friday, March 11.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have many lights on here. Let's see, Member Wasson, did you want to go first?
Member Casper was in front of me, and I'll wait for him.
Okay, go ahead, Member Casper.
All right. I've thought a lot about this, talked to a lot of people about what's before us and the impact of what's before us. Heard from dozens and dozens and dozens of people, Nettleton parents, Woodland parents, Central parents, even folks who don't have kids in the district who are expressing concerns over this. I can't hardly go to the grocery store without talking about the budget, and that's a good thing, because that's what we want, is our families invested in what we're doing in IST 709. So I spent a lot of time over the weekend, I've talked to principals at all three levels, not just one school, but all three levels, about some of their concerns with some of these considerations. I've also spoken with teachers, and I mentioned lots of parents, and I am offering up a revision to this, or a consideration that I would like us to consider as a board, and I've made copies for everybody so we can follow along. And I'd like to point out that I helped put together this graph, and it was very hard for me to do. If Keith had been with me, I could have done it a lot faster, I'm not very computer literate, nonetheless. I would like us to consider some potential modifications to our budget, and after I go through those, I'd like to talk about how we might be able to realize those. Starting at the top with the district administration reductions, I would like to see us add in $45,000 for a half-time science curriculum coach, and that to me is a minimum, recognizing that the state is handing down new science guidelines, as well as engineering guidelines, I feel that we need to have a person or something that's sort of governing to ensure that we are implementing that, and that teachers have those resources to implement that. Recently, the News Tribune did a story on our science proficiency, and it's woefully low, and I certainly don't want to see it go any further that way, and I want to see what we can do to accentuate that. I was told at a luncheon meeting I was at today that right now China is graduating 6 million engineers a year, and we're not, and we need to be looking at why in the United States that's not happening, and to me, reducing our effectiveness in science, or the potential for effectiveness in science, isn't the right way to go. I also am asking for consideration for site administration reductions. Our latest proposal had called out $487,000 for four assistant superintendent positions at our schools, recognizing that just a few minutes ago, we talked about our anti-bullying efforts, and recognizing that we're going to need somebody in our schools that ensures that that is implemented, that that is carried forward at some of those schools where we as parent, or as, well, as board members and I as a parent have heard, some of those issues are greatest. And also recognizing the importance as far as safety, implementing school initiatives and things like that, especially as we look to the future, and we're looking at moving to two different high schools in just a few months, in the future, we're looking at Woodland taking, changing to a different location, or that middle school looking to a different location. I believe we need to have those people in place, we need to have that continuity, we need those students to feel like it's a safe and welcoming environment, and I believe those principals or vice principals at those sites are critical to that. I've also asked as part of our reductions to reduce our cuts to athletics from $130,000 to $50,000. Mr. Hanson at last week's committee meeting said that our athletics program is already one of the highest rates in the state, and we are eliminating that opportunity from children who maybe don't qualify for it to be offered to them free or reduced, but we are eliminating, potentially eliminating, kids who would want to participate in that because of those increased rates. They're already, as Mr. Hanson said, they're already higher than most other districts in the state, and I would hate to see us price children out of that opportunity to enjoy athletics. The other consideration that I would like you folks to consider is the reduction in cuts to special education, a $300,000 reduction in those cuts, I feel like a million dollars in that program is too drastic a cut. We heard from teachers and parents concerned about kids' opportunities that might be mainstream because of this decision, and them not having, or that schools not having the resources to properly deal with those, so I'm asking for that to be considered as well as a reduction. That all told comes out to about a million dollars less in cuts than the recommendations. I'm proposing a couple of ways for us to make that up. $500,000, and unfortunately, I couldn't get Katie to commit to 100 students, but I believe, imagine in a district of 1,000 employees, in a district of 10,000 students, if those 1,000 employees, if one out of every 10 of them was able to convince one student, one family, to return to the district, the impact that it would have, that's just in talking to them, let alone the wonderful things that we are implementing, whether it's our principals calling families who have left the district, or we're going out door-to-door, or we're mailing these flyers to families that are in those boundaries of our schools that have chosen alternate forms of education. One out of every 10 of our employees in this room, if combined, we went out and found two students, and we modeled that across the district, the impact that it could have on the district, a half a million dollars or more in positive revenue. Now, I know Chairperson Soligapunko and I have talked about this numerous times, and I know that there's additional costs with 100 kids, but certainly, it doesn't outweigh the positive impact that it could have on our budget. So I'm calling us to service. It's all of our responsibilities, it's not the seven of us, the eight of us, the 10 of us, the 30 of us, it's collectively IST 709 who needs to work jointly to attract kids back to the district, to present us. If we can't do that now, in a time when we're opening three brand-new, state-of-the-art grade schools, elementary schools, state-of-the-art, best-in-the-state, safe and welcoming, technologically up-to-date, if we can't now attract students back to our schools, when are we going to be able to? If we can't attract them back to, and I've toured the New Eastern High School, it's a beautiful facility, it's probably going to be one of the nicest in northern Minnesota. And Denfeld is also beautiful, and it has the opportunities that board members have fought for, community members have supported. If we can't now attract students back, when are we ever going to be able to? So we have to commit, and now is not the time, in my mind, to cut to the point where it hurts, to cut to the point where more students decide that we're not providing what they need, whether it was a woman who had three children, who has made a cognizant choice to choose Nettleton, or the family that enrolls their student, or their child at a school, and because class size is way too big, or the offerings, or it's unsettling, to me, if we go to that $6 million, we create that, and my fear is that we continue then to have to make a cut. To me, this is our line in the sand. Enough is enough. We're not going to lose any more students, we're going to take a stand and believe in this district, and we're going to take a stand and believe that we can do what it needs to be to become solvent. So that's a half million dollars. I would love to see us get more than 100 kids, that's my dream, and I'm sticking to it. The other half million dollars, we've been told we have $13 million, and I know that superintendent's going to get upset with me when I refer to it as this, but he referred to it as it, so I get to do that.
It was a mistake.
As a rainy day fund. If we used a half million dollars from that, imagine if for the next 26 years, we used a half million dollars of that. So this isn't a major robbing of it. Now, I've looked at the budgets, the last, I believe, the last four years, we've taken out of the reserve fund, and it may be more than four years, so it isn't that we've had a balanced budget, we have drawn from that reserve fund for many years. If we only drew a half million dollars in 2011, '12, we are significantly ahead of what we did... ahead of what we did last year. And that provides us that opportunity to show the public that we're here to stay, that we believe, as a board, that we've turned that corner, that we're making that difference. If we can, if we just cut, and we don't look at ways to change that, and I believe we are, but if we don't look at creative ways to change that, then I believe we will continue to see cuts, and we will continue to fight this battle, and to fret, and worry about class size, and all those other kinds of things that impact the quality of education for our students and our staff at ISD 709. So, I'm asking you, as open-minded board members, to consider parts or all of this, or others, but let's look at a creative way to continue to offer a safe and welcoming environment, an opportunity for all of our kids to achieve at a high level. And unfortunately, I can't remember the third one. But anyway, thanks for your consideration. Thank you.
Member Casper, I'm wondering if, you mentioned something about, oh, let's see, it was the special ed costs, and we have Laura here, just, because there were a couple of emails that we received about some EBD, that's what it was. And I'm wondering if I could call, I'd like to call Laura up, if you could maybe answer that before we get into this. That might answer a couple of questions about that. Thank you.
So, you, and what is your question?
We've got something about EBD level, oh, I'm sorry. What was it?
Well, I think, I think some, some of it was about, maybe what to answer, what would be different about a million versus 700,000. But I think, one of the things that are going around is just that, that if you heard the first speaker tonight, is that the level three kids, and, let me also say, though, I mean, first of all, as a district, special ed's important to us, always has been. That's why we're in our per-student group, if not the highest, second always. I mean, it's not, heavens, I have a lot of special ed children of my own, so this is near to my heart. But I think the reality becomes of, in many respects, how we tighten this up because of how much we do actually invest. And I think it is an investment in special education. It's not that at all. But I think it's around that level-three program, Laura.
Okay. We currently have eight teachers teaching setting-three EBD. And we have a program within this building for our ninth-through-12th graders. We have a setting-three classroom in both high schools, both middle schools. And then we have three at the Lincoln site, where we bus students in. What we are recommending is that instead of having eight teachers, we would go to six, maintaining our program downstairs for ninth-through-12, and then looking at the needs of our high schools and middle schools, because they both had programs, supporting them with an EBD teacher, and giving the principals that flexibility to man it the way they want. You know, will it be just setting-three students, which means they're there for the majority of the day, receiving their service, or will it be a two-three classroom? Then what we looked at, our elementary programs that are at Lincoln, where would those students go back, and how could we support those schools? I think the parent from Nettleton misunderstood, that he thought that we would send students back, and they would be put in general ed for the whole day. We would still meet their needs. If they needed a full-day program, we would support them with special ed services. If they could try some general ed classes, which is our goal to mainstream, then we would work that in. But we would not just all of a sudden send them back to their school with one hour of service. So, I think he misunderstood that. So, we would still be supporting our students with dispersing the teachers, working with the paras. We are looking at cuts also with our paras, but again, sending them strategically to schools to support those students.
Thank you. Could you explain maybe the difference between, I think Superintendent, you said it, the 700,000 and 1 million, maybe just a little bit?
This, what, we looked at what it would look like if we cut at 700,000, and then if we needed to cut 1 million. And our second tier was, again, residential. We do send money to them for their programming, so that would require more para cuts there. We also looked at cutting one more social worker, getting to that level, cutting a .5 transition teacher, which is our teachers that work with our high school students, setting up work programs, and supporting them to transition to our 18-to-21-year-old programs. And then we were looking at cutting two FTEs, more of para positions.
Okay. Thank you. No, I'm not sure, should we just keep going with ideas? And then, I'm not exactly sure how we should do this, because there's a lot of different pieces here. Member Watson, do you want to maybe?
Well, I, I want to thank Member Casper for spending some time with this and coming up with some ideas. I appreciate that. I had my light on originally to say that I would like administration to go back and look at the high school recommendation for principals and assistant principals, assistant principals and athletic directors. My concern is very similar to what Member Casper was saying, in that we're opening new facilities. I believe East High School is at 1565 for next year, and that could, could change. I don't think it's a time to decrease our administrative staff and buildings, in that we want to continue to have that safe and welcoming environment. Last year, we pared down, I think about as low as we could go with principals and assistant principals. And I think we found that we needed more support. So, I would like to ask administration to go back and reconfigure the assistant principals, that body at our two high schools for the next year. And I appreciate what you've said, Member Casper. I think, as a board member, I've said this multiple times, these are our most challenging days as board members, and most difficult. And I respect what the administration and business service department has done. In December, we were asked to make some cuts, and we couldn't get there. And, and part of being a board member, as hard as it is, because after you've been around for years, you, you do know faces and names. And whether it's a bus driver, or a kindergarten teacher, or an assistant principal, they all have families. And it becomes very personal as a board member. None of our decisions are ever easy, but particularly this year, when it impacts a person every single time. And I will not be one to be easily persuaded that any of the cuts are easy. But I, I do know that in December, I was disappointed that we didn't approve what we were asked to approve by administration. We used other funds to kind of piecemeal that together, which created more of an imbalance for us. Now, at this juncture, being a board member, at some point, you just have to, you have to get to that point where you say, we have to move ahead. And while I do say that I'd like to restructure the high school principal department, their administration, I'm not certain at all that I agree with the rest of the suggestions that you have. I think they're admirable, but at this point, I almost feel like we, we have to continue on with what we've been given.
Thank you, Member Watson. Member Johnston?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of questions that I've got. I'm, first, I want to thank Member Casper for putting forth some good work. The, I guess, the only criticism I would have of it is it didn't go far enough. When I look at this proposed budget considerations that we're supposed to be voting on, and telling the administration to move ahead with, I'm very, I've got a lot of concerns. First of all, of course, the special ed thing is, I am very concerned about that. Special ed, as a person mentioned, and has, I've also been talking to lots of people, get lots of calls, is that if we don't fund special ed, that impacts all the school, not just the special ed people. And of course, they are, our students do have the most challenges, and we, you know, again, Member Casper's suggestion down to 700,000 is certainly a step in the right direction, but I don't think it's far enough. I look at the teacher-student ratio. Thanks to the savings in the health care, we've been able, managed to get this total budget down to about 6 million, which is good. But we still have 928,000 on the teacher-staff ratio increase. That's about 15 teachers. And that's, that's a lot. It was certainly better than the 2 million, which would have been, I guess, a lot, about 30. So, I'm certainly very happy that we've improved on that one. But this is still pretty bad. I want to say that I propose, first of all, first of all, let me talk about the question here to Jody, maybe. The sheet that we got back on January 19th has our budget, which was kind of a preliminary that shows we had, originally showed we had a $7.3 million reduction. Went up to 7.7. Now, luckily, we're down to 6. But that indicates the projected revenue for 2012 is 86,000. But yet, going back, which we're going to be talking about later, page seven, on the total bun, total general fund balance is 93 million. So, could you explain why, on page seven of the business report, it shows a $93 million general fund revised budget, but yet, back in January, which is where, why we said we had the $6 million budget deficit, now it's said we had 86 million?
You're, you're correct, Mr. Johnson. If you look at the page seven of the current financial statements in the board packet, you'll see that the adopted budget was 88,249,000 and that, for adopted revenues. And the revised revenues right now are 93,088,000. So, they have gone up approximately 4.5 million, 5.5 million. The offsetting, and I'm sorry that I didn't get this answer to that, but the same thing with the expenditures, was 88 million for expenditures, and there's now, the revised budget reflects 94 million dollars in expenditures. There is a difference between the board-approved adopted budget of a 300,000 deficit reflecting 1,260,000. And I'm sorry, Mr. Glass did mention this to me the other day, and I forgot to find out what that 960,000 difference is. But I will get that, and get that response back to the board.
Okay. Thank you, Jody. Another concern that I've, well, I guess the concern is, I'm a little bit concerned here, where, I'd like to get a little more documentation that this deficit is really there. You know, we have, we all talked about all night about how we have budget problems, but before I start to say we're going to get rid of 15 teachers, and a whole bunch of special ed people, along with all the other people in the athletics, as well as everything else, I'd really like to get more documentation. I do want to bring up a couple of issues, which I brought up before, which this board, and I guess administration, has chosen to ignore, is that I think it's important that we find ways to cut our costs, not just look at ways to increase our revenue. And some of those are, I think we have to, we, we do have to look at things. And I brought this up on smart boards. Smart boards is something that we're spending, I don't have the number here right, but somewhere around 4 million dollars, 3, 4 million dollars we're spending this year on smart boards, or with the red plan. Those are things that, I know we want the technology, but I'd rather have teachers any day than smart boards in our room. And those are things that was, never even been put on this list. Other issue, which I'd like to correct here, which I have talked about before, and I do believe that maybe Member Casper brought this up a little bit, but I've talked about hiring internal auditors. We have to look at the big picture here. This is not something that is going to go away. Internal auditors are a special group that looks at the whole system here and says, how can we cut? Everybody that I talked to that has internal auditors say that we should, we should be able to cut, you know, a million dollars even more. If we spend $100,000 on an internal auditor, that would be a 10 fold payback. We used to have an internal auditors in this district, and for some reason, they went away here, apparently, about eight years ago. And we should get that back again, because that's going to save us millions of dollars over the years. And another issue that I brought back is that we should be doing more of our own contract administration, and not giving the money to, say, Johnson Controls, Cross Anderson, Bussard. We know that, we, everybody says, oh, gee, this is all wad run over the bridge. Well, the fact of the matter is, this is one of the reasons that we are having a budget deficit, is that we could contain some of those costs. We could save, you know, potentially millions of dollars. So, those are issues that I've also got with this proposal here, is those were not even considered. I think it's absolutely critical. We have everything on the table, not just the stuff that, that's on here. So, I do have concerns about that. And, and due to those concerns, I'm going to make a motion that we table this resolution.
I can second that.
Okay. We have a motion to table, and a second. And we can just vote right on that? Can't we, historically? Oh, non-debatable. Okay. So, we're going to vote on tabling the whole budget. Is that correct, Mr. Johnston?
Yes, correct. And the corrects, Secretary, motions to table are debatable.
Um, I, I looked, I'm, let's see. No, it isn't, right on the card. So, we're going to vote, let's just vote on tabling it right now, the whole budget as proposed, the original proposal, correct? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Okay, that fails three, four, with Members Casper, Glass, and Johnston voting in favor. Okay, we can, Member Casper, you want?
Me.
Member Cameron, go ahead, if you can. Which one of you?
My first question, when is this due? I mean, I, I, I think that we've been prolonging this for quite some time, and I know there's a date out here that this is due to the state, so.
Thank you for that. Let me try to address this. First of all, we sort of work backwards with a goal that says, and I, and I think we ought to stick with this goal, that by the end of the school year, by the time staff leaves, it's, and, and they need to know clearly where they have a job next year, and where they're going to be teaching. In addition, if staff are not going to have positions, then the reality is, the sooner we can let them know that, the better, because the prime hiring season for most school districts is probably starting now, April, May. It's not in June, July, and August. So, to work backwards, first of all, and to have it done, in essence, what happens is, after, let's assume you approve this tonight, let me work through it, so you get an idea. One would be immediately, by the end of this week, in fact, we're already preparing them, we would meet with the principals, or the first of next week, and give them their projected enrollments for next year, along with their total FTE, and their site budgets. And quickly, over the next, then, week to 10 days, meet with those principals, as they put their plans together. And then we would start moving forward. The high schools and middle schools have all pre-registered. They know how many students want what courses. They would go want what courses, they would go right immediately into building the master schedule, and immediately, we would go into posting positions and moving our staff around to have it done by the end of the year. This is a directional budget. The final budget is approved, as you know, by the board in June. Between now and that, there will be some fine tuning of this. One would be, obviously, hopefully, by then, we'll know what the legislature does, hopefully. Second, by then, we'll have a clear picture on our projected enrollments, even though some of that goes in over the summer, we'll have kindergarten roundup done, and some of those kinds of activities. So it's a, it's a journey, it's not an event. And for us, to meet that timeline, this, actually, from past years, we're actually two weeks behind where we've been over the last few years of getting this done, by the time school is out. So it's getting tight, in terms of putting this piece together right now. I, let me add a couple of other pieces, maybe based on some of these ideas, and make sure I heard what's being on the table right now, what's being discussed. First of all, how many, how many retirements did you assume in this budget? 20, 25? What'd you assume?
Yeah, we're in the range of 25.
Okay. First of all, there, I under, I agree with you. I think we're gonna do everything, another thing we're gonna do this spring is have previews of coming attractions, and have openings in May to try to get people into our schools so they can see them. We're gonna do everything we can to bring students back. The question is, when are you gonna count the revenue? Are we gonna count it before we have it? Or are we gonna count it after we have it? And the balance between that. I would prefer to count it after we have it, and, because it's always easier to add than it is to cut, first of all. Number two, we don't know the outcome of this legislative session yet. All right? I mean, we, yes, the governor's proposed a positive increase in education, but the other two, the House and Senate, proposed negative cuts to education. So till there's a conference committee, or they can agree, we don't know what that's gonna be. Number three, I just asked Bill a very important question. How many retirees do we think we're going to get? The reason is, we budget on retirement expenditure on a year-to-year basis. We don't, it's not accrued, it doesn't start if a teacher starts the first day, or an employee in the district, and then we're putting it, that's Gatsby 45, putting the money aside, and by the time you retire, it's there for you. The reality is, if we have 40 retirees versus 20, that we budgeted on, then fund balance just went down another million six, because we don't have the accrued dollars sitting there. We're not accruing on an ongoing basis. And the reality is, from what I'm hearing, through, through teachers' retirement funds and so forth, that 40 may not be unreasonable. So the reality, that's good, because you get to keep your new teachers. But on the other side of the coin is, when you're balancing revenue to expenses, another expense is not, whatever above 25 we get is an extra expense, it's not in the budget. And that's a continued challenge. In fact, a few years ago, when we dropped about a million dollars in fund balance, almost two, the fact was, had none to do with financial planning, the fact was, that year, we had so many retirees, that it impacted our fund balance by 2 million. The other, so, so I think we have to think about that piece to this puzzle. It's a direction. Relative to what I, I think I just heard, because it's directional, we do have some other ideas, we're gonna bring back to you in April, on, as we move forward, on maybe fine tuning some of the district administration pieces. Okay? We heard some comments from you, and we put some new ideas together there. When it comes to site administration, what I think I just heard you and say, different, Tom's suggesting keeping all of them. Heavens, if you want to keep administration and increase class size, make my day, but I, you can't have both, even if we get that number of students back. The reality is, even if, if we dip any farther in our fund balance, or if there's more retirees, we'll have to have the board change their policy on your base relative to fund balance. There's just no, no way around that. I think you'd have to consider that. What, what I, what we could do there, there are, we actually proposed this a couple of years ago, and I'd bring it back, was, there are many districts that use two assistant principals in their high schools, but one of those assistant principals has responsibility for athletics as well, and so they don't run ADs in their building. We actually proposed that a couple of years ago, but we'll go back and look at some models like that. Not that athletics isn't important, but the reality becomes, a lot of the activities of athletics, scheduling, refs, and that can be done by a clerical person. And the reality is, an assistant principal then is a supervisory position versus a collegial position, as are ADs are in right now. So there are some advantages. So what I'm hearing right now is, or there's two different proposals. I think Tom's is to just eliminate this line, yours is to at least look at the high school piece, and maybe think about that AD piece in this piece, or start thinking about how to do that. Could you guys give me a number? This number wouldn't be 487.5 if we did that. I just need, I just need a number here, Bill. Give or take 10,000, but, but that's a possibility. The other thing I want to bring up, and again, this isn't people, or it's not personal, it's just business. The reality is, frankly, when I look at next year's projected enrollments, at our elementaries, if I look at excluding Lakewood and Stowe, because we know they're on the edges, and they're a bit smaller, but if I were to look at the other seven, let me read you the enrollments for next year, 486, 515, 488, 445, 454, 429. Nettleton's enrollment next year is 454. In essence, all of those seven are within 20, 30 students of each other, in terms of total enrollment. There isn't a building one running an assistant principal in any of these other buildings. Now, you could say, well, they're the difference in the kids. Well, let me give you the numbers on three reduced ones, if you want that. Okay? Nettleton, 80%. Lincoln Park, 70%. Lower Mac, 75%. Stowe, 67%. Yes, there's some variance, but not a degree that would suggest, I mean, we gotta, we gotta, we've gotta tighten things up, in my judgment. And I could look at other factors if you'd like, I have them. So, but I could do some work, if, if that's this direction, but, but at the same time, I think, depends which way you go, but I would guess, it would, we wouldn't, I don't know what the difference would be, Bill, give or take the two of you. Is it 100,000 difference, 90, or 50?
If, if you were to add two high school APs to the mix, it would be an additional 254,000.
Reduce two ADs.
If you took the two ADs off, it would be 62,000 more.
All right, so this number would go from 487 down to 420-something. Am I close? Just to give you a ballpark. There may need to be some extra secretarial support in that model, however, what, but I would work on some models, bring back to you, somewhere in between, I don't know. Okay? Those are two I've heard so far. I'd be, I guess the other thing, I would just say this, it's a rhetorical question. Why would we suggest that we have to cut 5 million if we don't have to, or 6 million? I mean, nobody wants to do this. These are audited numbers. You just heard our bond rating, we got one of the highest bond ratings of all districts. There's a reason for that. We know what we're doing in this, in financial management. We're not gonna, if, believe me, I'd love to be here cutting none. I'm not gonna say that's, it's 6,35,000, if it's not 6,35,000. There's no, no, why would we do that? So, so that's a possibility, I could do that. I would also tell you, it seems like if one of yours, I'm just trying to follow, we got the answer on, kinda on your, Tom, on your special ed, I think, from a, the other one, if I'm following along, must have been athletics, and did you must have Habitat in there to get 992?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Let me say, thank you for pointing that out, I'm sorry, I missed that, in there.
Let me just speak to that. First of all, this, this idea is either to make Habitat cost-neutral, or eliminate it altogether. Now, like you, Tom, you were saying you're out and about talking to a lot of people. I've been out and about for over a year, talking about Habitat. First of all, I want to share that, that there is no way to make it cost-neutral. Some of the proposals that just even recently come in, use Head Start money. And I will tell you, and you'll have Head Start at the next education committee, that they're philosophically opposed to our Head Start program, and will not invest in it. First of all, if you think about it for a moment, what we need to do for young women in that situation, or young men, parents, but particularly young women, is, we need to help them during high school to stay in school, but also learn how to find and keep appropriate childcare for their youngster. They're not gonna be there the whole time. All right? The reality is, and I'm trying to find it here, we have two programs already in our community, that in fact, do just that. I'm gonna find it. One happens to be at 57th Avenue West, or about 13 blocks from Denfell, and the other one happens to be at, since I can't find it, Lake, Lake Shore Lutheran, or about a block from Ordine. In both of these cases, let's take the one out west, they actually offer, for young women who are homeless and have children, an infant, that they can stay there for 18 months, they provide social workers for them, they help them develop a plan, and they, on the second floor, I've been out there, the housing's on the first floor, they actually have infant care for their infant, while the time they're there. They collect from the county, the appropriate reimbursements. Certainly, I think what we're looking at, is I think more about this, and I've spent more time on this, that that seems very appropriate, that we could work out a partnership there, and make sure the little ones are there, and make sure those students are at Denfell. Likewise, frankly, the one at Ordine, they could walk, because it's only really a block and a half from the school itself. So there are programs out there, that then do more than just provide childcare while the student's in school, they actually start supporting the parent, young parent, and how to acquire childcare ongoing, and how to start learning those parenting skills, and support their young person while they're there. So I don't want to hear, again, or I don't want, we're not trying to say that this is an important program. As I said, I've spent a lot of time the last couple of years, I've interviewed people from the county on this, who also support the model I just described to you, I've interviewed people in our Head Start program. In fact, I've asked a couple of them to come to next month's April meeting, to talk about what they see, and the structures that are in place. So again, I would prefer to move forward with that target right now, but certainly, if something changes as we move forward, then we can certainly do that as we get to the point. It's 100,000, but, but again, it's, that's what I've learned, just in the past, frankly, years, spending a lot of time working on this program, because this, remember, it was a consideration a year ago. And, and I really have spent a lot of personal time, because this is also an important program to me, to try to figure out what might be the best way to support these young people. So, so that's, I guess, I don't know if that helps, or whatever, to some of these recommendations right now.
Thank you, Superintendent. You know, Member Cameron, I'm gonna ask you to go next, just because I know you had a quick question before, so if you want to add.
Absolutely. I, my, I did want to ask the question, but I just have a couple of comments. Excuse me, I'm so tired. But Keith, I know we need to make cuts, and I trust the recommendations that come in from you, and, and your administrative team. However, my input is this, I can support eliminating ADs, and having two principals at the high school level. I can support the halftime science coach that Tom mentioned. But I want to address those schools on AYP. That is a real concern for, to me. And when I hear you talk about $5,000 or more to send our students who are failing to alternative sites, I think that's a concern that we all need to have. I don't like talking about a specific person, or a specific position that can be identified with the person, but we heard some of our speakers address that. So I am going to address Nettleton, and the assistant principal there. What I heard about the abilities of this individuals, of this individual, to me, it wasn't necessarily a principal position. And so when we talk about being creative with the dollars that we have, because we're not the only school that has to make reductions, I'm going through the same thing at the University of Minnesota-Duluth, and so it's hard, and, and it does mean somebody's gonna lose a job. But I think that if you see talents in individuals that really have a positive impact on students, then as leaders, then we need to do something creative to keep them, find a creative way to keep them. But my, my main concern is, is lessening the impact on those schools with AYP, because I think in the long run, it's gonna cost us more money if we do not address it. And that's my two cents. I felt for quite some time that we've been delaying this, and I hate to be a part of that further delay, sending this back to administration, but I know you'll get it, get or done, because you always do.
Get or done.
Get or done.
Thanks, Member Cameron. I'm gonna go to Member Glass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have, for some time, been asking to see the totality of budget items being cut, so that we could get a better idea, when we cut 200,000 from a program, whether that's the entire program, or what. And so, if, in my mind, we're missing that, that third column, that tells us, forgives us more information. And, and I guess I'm also suggesting that there be a fourth column, that would dial in the $30 million that we're not missing out of the, the total budget, that is not in the general fund. If you look at the last two years, our total budget for revenues is 132 million. Granted, 10 of that is community ed, that leaves about a 30 million difference in monies that, that we're not considering, when we're, when we're looking at the budget that we've been given to, to look at of 86 million, projected for 2012. And so, that's a big concern for me, to not, to not know what that 30 million dollars is being spent on, and where might it be blended into areas that, that perhaps are adjacent, or could be, could be perhaps shared in some of the responsibilities. I, I'm sure that there are areas that, that would work out to be. The other item that I went and asked about is this, this item called transfer. And I recognize that, that has a certain degree of sensitivity, but if, if we could somehow change the amount of the transfer from 4.5 million down to a lesser amount, that would, that would add directly to the amount of resources that we would have in the, in general fund. Considering now that, that that transfer is mostly from the long-range facilities plan, and considering that it's 4.5 million for this projected fiscal year to '12, and it's going to increase to 5.5 next year, and it's gonna keep going up at, at a percentage, I think, 5 or 6% per year, it's going to be one of those headaches that, that boards will deal with every year, because whether or not that's realized as savings or not, it's still coming out of the general fund. And if there's a way to figure out a way to shift half of that to some other category, even if it's longer-term debt, be worth doing. So, so the clever folks that dialed this all up for a 20-year payout, that we would then be willing to take 5.3 out of our operating budget, had a little more- that we would then be willing to take 5.3 out of our operating budget, had a little more imagination, and they knew what the market was going to crash, maybe we should have run it up for 25 years and not had to have an operating decrease of, which is going to continue on for all the years, of 5.5 the following year, 6 the following year, and so on. So, that's the other big target that I would look at. We haven't even talked about what could be done to reduce that number. And I'm sure there are things that could be done to reduce it. So, I've got those two complaints. We haven't seen the totality of the budget, so we can see where the other $30 million fits in. We haven't talked about possible different ways of financing that amount of transfer. And without those, I would support the suggestions that Member Casper has made, and as well as the others, that we're cutting programs now that we need to have quality teaching program. And so, we've got to figure out a way not to do that. Well, that's all I have to say.
Jody and Bill, help me here with, I don't want to leave tonight, I was thinking there's $30 million somewhere, okay? So, would you please go through that piece, and then I'm going to address, first of all, there's not the payment on the long-range facility plan, on the, um, uh, transfer, the payment 2 points, this year's 2.3. And help, go through that part, go first through the $30 million, please.
Okay, the total for fiscal year that ended June 30th of 2010, the district had total revenues of $132 million. $100 million, $101 million of that was the general fund, 4.6 million was capital projects, 13 million was debt service, and 14 million, too, was food service slash community ed. That makes up the $132 million, $133 million budget. As the board is dealing with the budget deficit that is outside of all restricted programs, so for example, the title programs, the Head Start programs, and those we present to the board a balanced budget when we present you with the detail. Where we're short right now is on the general fund side, the unrestricted, what we consider to be the unrestricted budget, and that's the deficit that you're dealing with tonight. I guess I just want to make one interjection. Yes, you can delay what we're doing here tonight, but I had a maintenance employee just today say that they would rather know now if they have or do not have a job, because now they have at least two and a half months before they would be displaced on June 30th on trying to go out and finding other employment. So, I'm just going to say the comment that they made to me today. The transfer, yes, for next fiscal year for 2012, Mr. Glass did call me the other day, and the calculated amount for next year is roughly 4.5 million. I don't have exact number in front of me, but it's roughly 4.5 million. And again, as you know, that transfer consists of general fund savings, which I think for next year is projected from the plan to be 3-point-some million dollars that would come from general fund savings, and the remaining part of that transfer would supposedly is representative from property sales. We have finally received our first revenues from property sales from some of the Arrowhead property, and I anticipate now we're going to be receiving the revenues for the facilities property here in the very near future. Yes, the long-range facility plan does call for approximately $4.5 million or slightly above that in property sales for the next few years, and those are the dollars that are supposed to help us finance the transfer that will be made to the debt service fund. We do have a cash flow issue at this moment. So, again, it's just a cash flow at the moment. So, Mr. Glass, yes, you're correct that the transfer is $4.5 million for next year. It's comprised of both property sales and general fund savings. Majority of, I guess for next year, would be 3-some million in general fund savings and a million some from property sales.
And one last comment. I want to put a sheet together for the board showing all of these options, because I think we just need to do that. Is it 1.4, 1.7 million base on the authorization for the, out of savings, that we can't go below? Is it 1.7, you think?
You're in the neighborhood, it's, I, we believe it's 1.7.
I do, too.
It would be somewhere in that. In fact, I am almost positive.
The point is this, Board, on the, on the, on the, on the savings on the long-range facility plan, on the operational side. The savings that are projected is much more, it gets up to the 5.4 million that Mr. Glass is talking about. However, the authorization is that you can, the board does have the authority every year through the 20 years to, suppose a payment were 5.4 million, you could levy 3.7 million and leave it at 1.7 million, if you wanted to. So, you do have, Mr. Glass, another option on the table in the future, quite honestly. But again, levy is taxes. So, that's a consideration that over time, the future boards will need to think about on an annual basis, so.
Thank you Superintendent. Member Casper?
Yeah, I want to talk a little bit about both Member Wasson and Member Cameron's points. I agree that keeping those assistant principals in some capacity in our high schools is important, considering the size that they're going to be. I also believe that the assistant principal at our middle school is important. We all experienced, through communication with families who had children at Woodland last year, and we lost significant amounts of students till their house was in order. And they've created, I mean, as a board member, can you reflect on the last time somebody called you to talk about an issue at Woodland? It's probably been a year. And it's because of the partnership that they've created there, the relationship that they've created there, the teamwork, as the principal there talked to, when I talked to her about this yesterday, the teamwork and the atmosphere that they've created there. And that hasn't come without a price. It's cost us money to do that, but I think it's been worth it. And my hope is that we would want to continue that, because we don't want to see more kids leave or families or whatever, if that's changed. As far as Member Cameron's recognition, as I have recognized, what the assistant principal does at Nettleton, and maybe it's re-titled and repositioned as a dean of students or whatever. But having been there, and I, I like Member Cameron, it's the school that's closest to my heart, that has the potential to have the biggest impact on children's lives. And just because it looks a little different, I think we have to recognize that each of our schools are a little different, and the dynamics that happen in each of those schools are different. And we need to have things in place that deal with them. I was there a few weeks ago, I asked my good friend Roger Reinert if he would come and sit with me there, and we learned at that time that one kindergarten class at Nettleton has seven homeless children in it. Well, I don't know if that's.
I do know that.
Okay, but, so there are dynamics that are what I perceived as different. I've spent time at Lincoln, I've spent time at Laura MacArthur, not as much as you, I give you that, sir. You know, and I know that there's issues. I was shown a three-foot rod that one of the students took after the principal at Lincoln with. So, there are issues, and I recognize that. But I also recognize that what we're doing at Nettleton has some uniqueness to it, has some opportunity to make impacts, not that all of our other schools don't, but maybe the greatest opportunity for impact, positive impact. And I would entertain the discussion of labeling it differently, whatever we wanted to do to recognize that, but to continue the ingenuity and the effort and the love that I see from that person for the students that go to that school, so, thank you.
I just want to clarify one point, we're not cutting assistant principal at Woodland.
It's STC, I think.
I've got to make a place, however, for the STC principal. So, I've got to reduce ad administrator somewhere, and it's in that middle-level group. That's, so that's where that's coming from, Tom.
Thank you. Member Johnston. Oh, I'm, okay, Member Johnston, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to first reflect Member Casper's, Member Glass's concern about the budget. I think we do have to have this other money there. It's all part of the big picture when we're talking about potentially getting, laying off another 15 teachers and all these other people that we talk about here. I want to have everything at my disposal, because I don't want to risk making a mistake. And when people ask me what's going on, I want to be able to tell them. And I got to have everything at my disposal to do that, because this is a big responsibility. It's not a, not a, we have to do our due diligence, and that's what I have to do. And I think we brought this up at the committee hearing, but, I mean, this is a budget that we got. Half a page, two-thirds of a page. I mean, okay, we got the things that we're projecting as having deficits on, but what's the rest of it? What is our utilities? What is the healthcare cost? What is the cost for, for example, transportation? What is the cost for the Habitat program? The total cost, not the cut cost, but the total cost. I want all this stuff, and I understand you people saying you got to go forward here, but nonetheless, I got to have more information than this. And I do want to say something here, is that I think that we are at kind of a cusp here. We know we're saddled with the money from the red plan, and yes, we are saddled with it. The people know that, and for us to keep saying that it's not an impact on it is disingenuine. And so, now's the time, if we have to go through here, if we start cutting these programs now, we know people are already dissatisfied with us. We have opportunity here to say, no, we have to cut into the general fund if we are the, not the general fund, the fund balance if we have to, because we can't, the people that have been discouraged, we can't turn them away. We have to take a chance. My personal feeling, as I've already said this before, I don't think we're going to have this $2.2 million reduction due to enrollment decline. I think we're going to fix that. I think the faculty and the administration is working very hard on that, and do we know? Of course I don't know. Who knows? Maybe we'll have a $5 million decline next year. But we have to take a chance on, some good things happening here, and I don't think we should take a chance on, on taking, if we take that chance, that we're going to get direct rates, we're going to keep losing more students, and then we are going to be losing more than this 350 or whatever it was at $2.2 million that was projected. So, I think that we have to be real careful, that our publics are concerned, and that is what we hear. And I do want to say again here that, since people keep bringing it up, yes, some of this is caused by the long-range facility plan, the general fund savings. Every place I see there's a savings. I don't see any reductions from, for example, the teacher salaries that we've had tabulations of. All the savings, almost all the savings, 80% if I remember it, around long-range facilities plan are in salaries. And I haven't seen that reflected on any statement yet, due to inflation, due to, hopefully this year we got a good break on healthcare costs, that's not going to last. So, these savings aren't going to be there. And I was, unfortunately, I heard again here that we could levy more, or we could raise our taxes, or what's the alternative, cutting staff? Well, why weren't we told that three years ago? We were told, oh, we got, we were, our budget, our taxes are going to be so low, it's almost nothing. Well, now, the fact of the matter comes out here that we either raise taxes or we cut staff. And maybe it's water under the bridge, but it's really bothersome. I'm put in a position now, why weren't we told that four years ago? Because this is an issue. So, I can't support this.
Member Grove?
Guess I'd have to say I'm not hearing anything tonight that we weren't told, as far as what we have control over locally, that we weren't told about four years ago, and have been told many times since. I don't know about four years ago, but certainly, yeah, it is getting to be four years almost. There have been no surprises in any of this. The biggest problem, the biggest surprise, and I don't know if this is even a surprise, has been that shift, that negative shift from, with the state, as far as when we get our aid, that's causing a cash flow crisis, but that isn't immediately and directly affecting what we have to do in this budget. Again, there's no, there's no surprise here. It's something we've known that we've, I mean, you've got, Bill, you've got, you and Jody, you have figures for the out years. You can project anticipated deficits, and I can tell you, one we're going to have next year, right out, right from the get-go, is $1.185 million federal jobs funds. That, there's, we have a million-dollar hole in our budget next year for FY13, right out of the chute. I mean, without looking at anything else. So, I mean, when we talk about spending, fund balance, how are we going to cover that? Not with half a million, that's 1.18 million right there. As far as being optimistic and creative, I'd love to see an additional 100 students, you know, beyond, beyond what the projection is right now. I'd love to see it, we all would. And we're all, we're all going to hopefully put our best face forward and our best efforts out in the community in coming months to help that happen. However, in the meantime, I don't, I don't believe in indulging in fantasy budgeting. I mean, we have to budget based on what our best projections are, not on what we hope they will be, but on what they are based on experience. We've already shown in December that we have a devil of a time cutting a few hundred thousand dollars. We couldn't, as a board, we couldn't get there on a few hundred thousand dollars. So, I think, I just can't see building a potential train wreck into our budget for next year, and as well as spending down our fund balance. I mean, maybe, maybe we could stretch that out over a few years. Personally, I don't care to be someone that's cursed by future board members in five years or whatever. I'd just as soon behave what I view as responsibly in 2011 when I have to make these difficult decisions. It's no accident that we heard earlier this evening that Moody's gave us their top possible bond rating in connection with the bond issuance. That comes from fiscal responsibility. So, I would like to, and I guess I've said enough in that general direction, I would like to offer an amendment to the resolution on the table, and that would be, well, before I do that, I want to ask Dr. Dixon one thing. Is $286,000 on that top line, is that a comfortable figure to continue to work with? Okay, my amendment is that we pass this March 11th version of the cuts, which, reductions, considerations, if you will, which totals $6,35,000, with the understanding that by our, by our April meeting, Dr. Dixon, is that, that gives us, gives you six weeks to come back. By our April meeting, we will, we will have the detail to flesh out, that completely flesh out and rework whatever is necessary, but with a bottom line of $286,000 at that district administration reductions, and with the flexibility given to administration. that district administration reductions, and with, with the flexibility given to administration with their recommendations to do something with the two assistant principals that are in that site administration line, the two assistant high school principal positions, and that, what do they call them? Activity director idea, that to work, work, work something out there. And recognizing that it's possible it would cost a few thousand or, you know, whatever, what was that figure again?
Sixty-four.
$64,000 for exa, as one possibility, which was to eliminate the A.D.s and replace, you know, in essence, replace them with assistant principals. And then with, with any, any additional, any, any additional expense there would, as part of my amendment, would go into that 928,000 student-teacher staffing ratio line. It would increase that marginally, but, but I think tolerably, if not, not hugely. I did want to point out in that regard that 900, $928,000 is, we budget 90,000 per FTE, so that's actually 10 teaching positions, not 15, or, or anything different than that. So, does, does everyone understand my amendment? Should I do any, should I restate it?
Can you, yeah, why don't you clarify?
Okay. Okay. The considerations as presented on the March 11th reading, or list, with administration to work out the, the details of the 286,000 on the top line, and the two
Administration.
The two high school assistant principal positions on that 487,000 line to be in play and, and worked into some kind of a final recommendation with, with the understanding that that could involve our activity directors also.
Okay, that's your motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Oops. Okay, we have a motion by Member Grover, seconded by Member Watson. Is there any discussion? Member Cameron.
I'm going to have a hard time supporting that, Tim. And the reason why I'm going to have a hard time supporting is because you did not address issues at the elementary level, as far as I'm concerned. And I think that's where our, our students are most crucial, are at the elementary and middle school level. So, I'm not going to support it.
Okay, is there any more discussion? I'd actually like to weigh in. Been kind of quiet tonight. Just a couple of things. I see some value in what everyone has said tonight. Like Member Casper, I would like to see maybe a little bit of science, but that would be part of that 286,000, and you know my, my concerns about some of those, Superintendent. I would like to see that reworked a little bit.
I think that was part of the motion.
Yeah, it was. Yep, yep.
Yeah, it was.
And, yeah, and pretty much, I mean, I, I do see some value in this, and I, and this is really hard because a lot of these teachers are going to be cut. I, I know. I mean, this has been horrible. Like I've said, every year I've been on the board now, we've had to make cuts, and, you know, it is something that is frustrating. And then when I hear that the state legislature could end up cutting a lot of our funding, it's kind of scary with what Superintendent has said is happening on the legislature. We could be looking at many million more, and that, that's kind of scary to me. And, and I see some of the reasons it'd be nice to take some of the fund balance. I'd, I'd like to just, this is a preliminary budget, which some things can be changed. You know, we have to do a final budget later, once we kind of know what the final numbers are going to be from the legislature. But I, I'm kind of worried that if we don't at least kind of follow this, and then all of a sudden, in two months, we have to cut a whole ton more, I'm really worried because I'm sure we'll have to take some of our reserve fund. I mean, I just don't see any reason, so. I mean, I just hate this budget, which I know everyone does. It is, it's scary to me, what we're doing, and I, and I know we're trying to keep things as far away from, kids is possible, but it's getting to the point. Like I've said, we really shouldn't, probably are going to have to look at a four-day week eventually. I mean, you see more districts. I'm just throwing that out now. I know we're not going to.
Where did that come from?
But, but I just said, you know, I think that we're going to have to be, I mean, this is just getting really tough. So, but I'm, I'm willing, I know I've had some concerns, but I am willing to support what we have here, just because I don't, I don't see a lot more that we can do.
Maybe I could offer in some, if it could move us forward. But my biggest issue is I need to work with principals, get their enrollment out and get their staffing grids done. What, what I, I think what I'm looking at, listening to this discussion, is I think we're going to staff on an increased student-teacher staff ratio of 1.0 instead of .84. That's only 100, only 180,000. That gives a little bit of flexibility yet up top.
Then I'd like to see the transparency in Tim's recommendation. If you're talking about including, I'm sorry, am I out of order?
Go ahead, go ahead, Member Cameron.
If you, when you say, oh, oh, that's in there, right, Tim? If it's in there, I want it to be more transparent in your recommendation.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead, Member.
Could you clarify what you think should be more transparent?
When you were talking about some of the, some of the comments and recommendations that Tom mentioned, and the, and the science, and then Judy, you said to Tim, oh, that's part of it. Well, I didn't hear that as being part of it. And when Keith talks about, oh, that's part of it, when we talk about the increased teachers, I want it to be as transparent as your comments regarding the assistant principals and the A.D.s. That was very clear. That was a very clear direction to administration.
Go ahead, go ahead, Member Grover.
I, I understand what you're saying, Mary, but I guess the problem is, is we don't, we don't have any, we don't have detail that, that a majority of us seem able to embrace within that category tonight. So, that's why, that's why it's, that's why it's going back to administration, because that, that detail, which you say would make it more transparent, isn't yet available.
I don't think we discussed about the A.D.s and the assistant principals were very clear either.
They're not.
So, I mean.
Right. That's, that's why I was suggesting that it go back to administration.
You just don't want us to sort of sound like politics to each other, okay? I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
Maybe I ought to clarify whether, whether you want to change that, or you, we can use this interpretation. What I'm hearing, we, the, the two lines right now in question are the district administration line and the site administration line.
Yes.
Okay? If we're not, if, we, we can hit that first line somehow, even with some of the ideas you guys have told us about, including science and doing a couple of things differently. There's some ways we can do some things there. Okay? The, the line that's problematic is a bit, is still going to be around site administration. But if I start with 1.0 at the bottom, and at least I can move forward with some understanding that I'm, down the road, if we have more kids or whatever, and monies come in, we can, we can add more staff down there. But at least to get started for principals to planning, what I'm, I'm going to start with 1.0 on the increased student-teacher ratio line right now is a place to start, because we're close to that anyway. And then what I'm hearing is, between now and final budget, I've got to bring back in April to make some more definitive decisions around site administration and that district administration line. That's what I'm hearing. Okay?
I think so.
Now, some of you are disagreeing a bit. There's that, I, I hear the difference. I mean, and I'd rather not get into maybe, it's, we are disagreeing, I think, on a, on one specific position, for sure. Okay?
Yeah.
And, but, and that's.
And that position is not important. I think that the help at that school is more important to me than that position.
Yeah, and help can, see, that's my point. It could be done a lot, when I heard you earlier, Mary, you said, think about other creative ways to do that.
I see.
Yeah. So, so, given that, what I've heard, I'd try to go back and work on those two pieces. That's what I would try to do. That, it doesn't mean down the road, we still can't get some more kids. It doesn't mean that, eventually, I'd like to get, obviously, we get more kids, we're reducing that 1.0 line, that, that, because the only one left is, unless you want to do. I, I think we're going to be fine somewhere, when we get stuff figured out between the, around the 1 million special end. We've got some work to do, but I think we can get there.
Okay.
That's, I mean, I, but, sure, if they, if I said seven, they'd be happier, but I, I, well, you know, it was interesting. I mean, let's get real, you've got, you know, this isn't easy. And you asked me one day, how do you even come up with some of this stuff? And I said, you've just got to push people. You've got to say, what does it look like at 200, 300, 500, 700, a million? I mean, the, the, everything we're doing is valuable service. I mean, there's anybody that's not providing support in this district. Let's be clear about that. That's, it's not that all this isn't important, but that's the, the challenge right now.
It is the tough part about being a board member. I'm going to ask Member Grover. Oh, did you want, I'm sorry, Mary.
It's a concluding thing. I just asked, when you talk about AYP, you're not just talking about Nettleton. And I think I made myself real clear when I said the schools that are on the AYP list.
Yes. I heard all levels in that discussion.
Thank you. Okay, Member Grover.
I'm going to pass.
Okay.
If I could.
So, oh, Mr. Johnson, you would like to say something?
Yeah. I would, I would just like to add that, you know, anything that we're talking about adding back, I hope that we are going to bring that through the same processes that these decisions came through, and that those decisions would be based on research and best practice that, that best helps our students. That's it.
Okay, Member Grover.
May I ask Member Cameron a question?
Go ahead.
Mary?
Yes.
If I may?
Absolutely, Tim.
Thank you. Is there, is there an amendment to my amendment that you could offer that would enable you to support it?
I would like to hear something that's real clear, that we're going to look at those schools, those schools on AYP to try to provide the help that's needed. And I would be happy to provide my dissertation, once it's done, to, because I have a lot of ideas in it that could help students be more successful, specifically students of color and kids from poverty. But I do want in your, your recommendation to, to be clear about lessening the burden on those schools that are on the AYP list.
Do you have an idea how to do that?
You know what, Tim? It's 11 o'clock, and I went to work this morning at 7:30, so I would say, I'm going to pass it to administration, because that's what I do as a board member. And I'm not going to try, I try to come up with language tonight to get across what I just said.
If you have a second for direction, if you will, help hold for this resolution.
Because as it stands right now, this amendment is going to fail.
I will support it if you add that in there. I mean, just, you know.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure what to add in there. I, I.
Look, Keith, do it. Look, Keith, do it.
I support, I support what I heard from administration, which is that we can't justify having an assistant principal position at one elementary school.
I'm not advocating for that, Tim. I don't, I think you're tired, too, because, see, that's not what I'm advocating for at all, and I haven't advocated for all evening.
People get us too mixed up.
Okay, so, so we need to.
Do you have the, do you have the, what Tim had said? Can you repeat that?
I've been here today, too.
All right.
Oh, I do. It, I have, here's what I have. To amend the motion on table. All right, to amend the motion, the marksman of the person with the reductions with the understanding that by the April 14th, we will have details to work out for the 286,000 administration reduction. Perhaps we can do something like assistant high school positions and A.D.s positions, and any additional expense would go into the student-teacher ratio line.
Yes, and, and I think maybe to add in there just before, another and, or wherever it fits, but the idea that consideration will be given in the proposal, actually, both district and site, to, how to support schools on AYP. That's what I heard.
Perfect, simple.
That's what you heard, but that wasn't what it was in my motion, so.
I know.
If we're going to change the motion. I, I, I think we need some clarity tonight on this assistant principal position. I don't think we should let that hang out there unresolved, and I am perfectly willing to amend my, my, offer an amendment to my amendment, which would, which would add the language about we will, we will shift equivalent resources to the, you know, the cost of that assistant principal position to.
Other interventions.
Other interventions, however you want to put it, to Nettleton-specific, or schools with AYP difficulties?
You know, I like that language, but I, I, I question why we are signaling out Nettleton, because it wasn't on the recommendation. We've heard people come here and talk about that specific position. I just have a problem with, as, you know, to, of doing that, because it was not on the recommendation from administration. So, I don't want to react and signal out a, a specific position because of comments that we heard from the public. I'm sorry, I don't want to do that. I, I think it's inappropriate. I think I said what I needed to say about being creative and, and the comments that I heard about that position at Nettleton. It just seems to me that it sounded like a teacher role, it could have been an advocate's role, you know, not necessarily a principal.
Or assistant principal.
Yeah. Okay. So, Member Grover, do you want to just finish that?
I'm, I'm not understanding what I just heard, I guess, because my understanding is that has been one of the positions within that four from day one.
Then let's just say all elementaries. I don't want to just, I don't, I have a problem with naming one school, because it just, I mean, the focus is on that one person there, and I just have a problem with that.
May I offer an idea?
Okay, Member Casper.
Why don't, why don't we pick a number that we're comfortable with? Let's say 5.7 million, considering these cuts, as well as reinvestment back with some of that money, whatever that, so it'd be $300,000 for these concerns that we have brought up as a board, and ask the administration to bring back how we would utilize that money to deal with schools that are on AYP, as well as those other concerns. So, if we, if we give a monetary number in my mind that, that would allow the, the administration some flexibility to offer some resolve for us that have expressed the concerns that we've heard tonight, and, in essence, giving them a number to work with, rather than sort of come back with ideas, let's, let's deal with the things that have concerned us. What kind of number that would be, I don't know. Maybe Dr. Dixon can offer a number that would give us a, a guiding principle that, yes, we're going to make 5.7 million in cuts. We have most of the framework here. There's still some details that need to be worked out that have, have been fleshed out because of concerns from board members and the public.
I'm looking at time, too. I'm just trying to help you move forward. The reason, well, I think the reality is, I already have that. It's not 300, but I got 200 and some. I just added 180 down in there when I changed that to exactly 1.0, and I was thinking about some savings up here in that site administration line, or how some things, I might be able to do that differently. And I already know I've got some other ideas that I may be able to get the 286 to 320. I mean, I already worked on some of this. So, the reality is, I probably have a couple of hundred thousand or more in this. I think the important thing is if we could move forward, and I can work on those, but then I can at least get the staffing grids out. If at the end of the day up here, we decide that we can have more savings, then the reality is, we inevitably have to end up adding some staffing over the summer anyway, or as we move forward here, you know? So, so it just helps me. the summer anyway, or as we move forward here, you know. So, so it just helps me move those principles forward on initial planning, initial planning, so.
Okay, so we have an amendment to vote on first, that Member Grover brought up, correct? And it was moved by Member Grover, seconded by Member Wasson. And do we need to hear that again, or is everyone pretty clear? I mean, within a few parameters that we are?
Well, the parameters are part of the motion.
Part of the motion, yeah. So, okay, so are we ready to vote on that amendment first? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no.
Am I voting on the original from Tim?
Yes.
The amendment?
Yeah, it was, it was an amendment to the resolution.
To the resolution.
No.
So, I've just got that, I lost that. Which, okay. What was the vote again?
Three to four failed.
Three to four, so it failed. So we're going to go back, yes, I voted yes. So we're going to go back to the original motion, right?
Right, the original resolution.
The original resolution from, from administration.
Yeah, as, as brought up today through today.
Okay, so we're ready to vote on the original resolution, which was, there were a few concerns that we had, right, that are just the original motion. Is that correct? And that was moved by Member Grover. Who was that seconded by? I'm sorry.
Seconded by Member Wasson.
Member Wasson. Okay. Can I make sure that I have this correct? No?
It's, it's what's in the packet.
It's what's in the packet.
Well, not in the packet, it's what, we got an email.
It was, yes, it's as, as updated on Friday, and as further fleshed out in, in an email today from Bill Hanson, as far as the learning services restructuring.
Okay, discussion. Member Casper.
I actually would like to offer an amendment, and it's along the lines of what I previously discussed, that we identify a specific amount of money to be resourcefully found to deal with the issues that Member Cameron brought up, as well as other board members with students that are on AYP. So if we identify a budgetary amount of money that creates resources to deal with, with that from within these, these budget reductions, and, and whether it's 260 or 300,000, or whatever we came up with, I'll offer $260,000, since that seems to be somewhere within reason and, and potential of attaining, that deals specifically with our schools that are on AYP, and how to better provide for those kids that are, are struggling at those schools.
Okay, we have an amendment? Member Casper, do you want to change that slightly?
I'd like to modify that. I don't have enough note-taking space. So as part of that, I would also like us to address the, the assistant principal positions, at least the dialogue of, of what that implication might be at our high schools.
And the elimination of the ADs.
And the elimination of the ADs. The position of AD at our schools, so. Yeah, it's. I don't even know what I'm proposing. Two six, so 268,000, two eight, 286. $260,000 removed from the budget considerations that deal with, that is specifically targeted for dealing with schools that are on AYP, and how to provide better resources, and what those will be, that could come to us in suggestions from the administration. And then also the evaluation of the potential of using assistant principals in the, as, in addition to their responsibilities as athletic directors at our two high schools.
Okay, Member Casper, you didn't want to say anything about the first item, either with maybe science or something, or just some?
Well, I assume that was already part of.
Well, I don't know, was it? Was it part of the?
Let me, can I, may I take, try to take a shot at this?
Go for it.
Please.
Go for it.
That, what it would say, basically, the amendment would be, you direct administration to move forward with staffing plans at the schools, based upon an increased student teacher staff ratio of 1.0, and further direct administration to bring back specific alternatives under district administration, site administration, that balances the budget to 6,35,000.
Okay, that sounds, we have a more, an amendment. Do we have a second?
Uh, Member Johnston already seconded it, if that's.
Oh, you did? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
If you're seconded what, the way it was just raised?
Okay. Okay, let's hear it again.
The amendment would be to direct administration to begin working with principals, using an increased student teacher ratio, staff ratio of 1.0, and bring back alternatives under district administration, site administration, based upon what we've heard tonight, all of that, that balance the budget to 6,35,000.
Okay, so, Member Casper, that is your amendment to the motion. And Member Johnston seconded it, correct? Any discussion on that? Okay, let's vote on the amendment.
Wait, wait, I have a question. I don't understand that. What does that do to the top, top line, then?
Same amount, I think.
Well, I think what, I guess what I'd say is, what it does, in my view, to the top line is, it's going to be pretty close to the same number. It may be a bit higher. And then I've, listen, we can look at, I'm hearing, given what I'm hearing tonight, I mean, I'm hearing, I'm probably going to bring a plan back that has at least a halftime science person in it to try to figure out if I can get four votes, and figure out some other alternatives here, all right? That's what I hear, Tim, kind of, I mean, in the top line, what I'm hearing, I've already heard about restructuring this differently, so it's flatter, with less director titles and those kind of things. So I can work on some of that kind of stuff. But that's what I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to listen to you, and then I'm going to go back and work on some ideas. I'm hearing you would like me to look at some ideas that at least keep the assistant principals at the high schools in some models, and still cover athletics and activities. I'm also hearing somehow to look at, you know, the schools in adequate yearly progress, and, and we were conscious of that when we put our budget together. I would say, though, remember, we're, we're still trying to think about, when I think about adequate yearly progress, sort of the idea of this tiered intervention model, and those kids that are not doing well, I mean, we're still looking in this plan, assuming I can keep the budgets intact on integration dollars and so forth, and, and title, and compensating some of those things. We're still trying to look at some of the interventions. We'll bring a model to you that has integration specialists, and, and data coaches, and all those pieces to this puzzle still. So I wouldn't want to suggest that we're not using, I think, some best practice interventions.
And I'm not implying that.
I know you're not.
Absolutely, I know what's being done. I just think that we need to do better.
Yeah, so I, that's what I'm hearing in this discussion tonight.
Okay. Oh, Member Grover, you have something else to add?
So what, I, I hate such murkiness. I don't understand. What's, what is being done then on the site administration reduction line, in totality, not just, not just the two high school positions?
Could I offer my, it appears that we are moving ahead with the $6 million in cuts, but we're asking the administration to reconsider the first two categories, which is the site administration and the district administration, as well as the student to teacher ratio, to make up some of that difference to, and come back to us with further considerations on how to reach that number. But.
I think that sounds good.
Except, as well as the stu, I think Keith said something very specific about the student teacher ratio. He didn't, it wasn't a wide open reconsideration.
1.0. But that's what I mean, that much, that difference to help with.
Okay, so we're not even dealing with the STC principal position tonight?
No, that's part of this.
I know, but why, why, why do we want to leave that hanging out there? Because that's part of that line. I don't understand.
I guess maybe, I don't know if this helps or hurts. From what I've heard, I can tell you ideas I'll be back under site administration around the high school assistant principals. I'm still going to recommend the same things I recommended on the rest of the plan.
Yeah, I got that. Okay.
Well, then we might, but I can tell, you know, the, the challenge with this, and let's get real, the problem we've got is it's hard not, because I only got one as elementary assistant principal. There's a reason for that. Okay?
Okay, so we're going to vote on the amendment that Member Casper just brought up, and Member Johnston seconded it. So let's vote on that amendment first. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that carries unanimously. Okay, now, we're going to go to vote on the entire resolution with that amendment, okay? Is there any more discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of the original motion with that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries five, two, with Members Glass and Johnston voting against it. Okay, we've got that. Okay.
Moving on.
Moving on. Member Grover, do you want to take the other resolutions? Oh, my gosh.
I don't know if I have the energy.
Should we keep going? Let's get the resolutions done. Okay.
Next resolution is on page 74. Granting temporary and permanent easements to the city of Duluth for street and utility purposes related to Ivanhoe Street near Rockridge School. And I move Resolution B-311-2861, dated March 15th, 2011.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Member Grover, seconded by Member Wasson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Okay, let's move on to the next resolution.
Next resolution is found on page 90, dedicating on granting a new pedestrian and utility easement to the city of Duluth. And this is in the Grant School vicinity, yes, near Grant School. I move Resolution B-311-2869, March 15th, 2011.
So move, or second.
Well, my, Member Grover, seconded by Member Wasson. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote on the resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. Next one, Member Grover.
This is the final resolution, found on page 92. Resolution authorizing the purchase of real property located on Arrowhead Road. I move Resolution B-311-2864, dated March 15th, 2011. And Madam Chair, if I may, this, just to explain a little bit further, this involves a purchase of a piece of property which will enable us to most advantageously sell property that we already own, and which will complete the disposal of property on, on Arrowhead Road. Is that correct, Mr. Leiter?
That's correct. It's a tax forfeit property that's been appraised by the county, is available to us to consolidate along with existing property we own, and make it more marketable to an interested party. And if that doesn't follow through, I believe it'll make it much more marketable beyond that interest.
Thank you. So it's been moved by Member Grover, seconded by Member Wasson. Is there any discussion on this resolution? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carries unanimously. Okay, Member Grover, if you want to continue?
Yes, Madam Chair, I will move the remainder of the business committee.
Yes, Member Johnston?
I've got a concern before we move that, with the, with the opinion of the attorney earlier on, is that it appears that our tradition here of pulling out items is no longer valid. And if that's the case, we have to do each one of these individually, and not move the whole report. Because I do not want to be caught again, and be told here that we can't pull anything out, which is what the attorney said earlier. If that's the case, we have to do these individually.
I think we just were moving the whole report, first of all, then we're going to pull out some individual items, if you have discussion for that.
The attorney told earlier there that my opinion, that we could pull the things out. She indicated that that was not correct, and that this board could at any time override anybody pulling out a thing. And since I don't want that to happen again, since I think we got, the people at Duluth got ripped off last time by this board, I don't want to have a motion here. I want to have each, each report, and it be individually voted upon. Otherwise, I have absolutely no rights to bring any discussion anymore. And I don't want, that is completely wrong.
Member Johnston, I think just moving the whole report, having it seconded, and then, we have board members, they want to pull items, maybe they have some more questions about them, or maybe they just have a comment.
Yeah, it seems like everybody can pull them out except me.
Member Johnston, let me finish, please. And so what we do is, and we've, we've done this, and you've been part of it, where people have other questions about something or want a clarification, and so they bring up different items. And it's not necessarily contracts, sometimes it's just a informational item. So what Member Grover is doing was making a motion, and then we're having it seconded, or the whole report. And then we can pull out items if you want to discuss some of them.
Madam Chair, that's what I did last time. And the attorney ruled that what the board did was appropriate not to have discussions, but I pulled out. So I don't want that to happen again. So it seems like our tradition here of pulling out consent items is no longer valid, according to our attorney. So I, we, since we don't have consent agenda anymore, we cannot move the whole, the whole thing. We must move ones individually.
We could ask you to comment again. I think what I heard you say was different than that. I think I heard you say that you could move the agenda, board members could pull it out, and still do what we've done. But at any time in that agenda, the board could still supersede and call the question if they so chose. That's what I thought I heard you say.
Chair Sligopunco, members of the board, Superintendent Dixon, that, that is, in fact, my interpretation. That is, it's a two-step process. You move the business committee report, second it. At that time, there's a potential for people to withhold items, and specifically ask for a separate vote if they want it. The second step is to actually vote on the report. In order to do that, you have to have a closure of debate. So that was, that's the second step that happens in between.
I think we're missing a question, is what happens with the items that are withdrawn, or withheld? That was my question. If I withheld an item, like I did last, last month, and then this board decided, oh, we're going to call for the question. So you're saying that the board can anytime they feel like, call for the question, items that I have withdrawn, or any other board member can, that doesn't mean anything, though. That's what I heard you say, now and three hours ago. If that's the case, I will be objecting to any consent agenda items from here on. And this is not because of me, this is because of the board's action, and the ruling that the attorney made, which I think is incorrect. It's violating our own rules of order. But hey, if this is both the way this board wants to run, then we have to do each one individually. So we might as well just all go home and not even bother coming. So we might as well just all go home and not even bother coming here anymore.
Okay, the, the committee report has been moved and seconded.
No, it has not. I, I raised a point of order before that was moved and before it was seconded, because I will continue to raise a point of order until I know that I can withhold items and not to be overruled by you people who don't want to hear me talk. Which you did last month, and I was cut off, and we had items that were not even passed because of that. We have changed orders that were not even passed because of that.
Member Johnston, which items did you want withheld?
I want to know whether or not I'm going to have actual legal authority, if the attorney's not going to say you can override me anytime, and because you're too tired, and I want to know that if I withdraw an item, it will be withdrawn, it will be discussed, and not thrown out by the majority of the board here like the chair, the attorney says can happen.
That's majority...
Uh...
But the business committee needs to be moved and...
No.
Seconded before we can start pulling items that you want to have discussion on.
There's lots of independent items here that were pulled out, and if I'm going to go back and quote the rules of order again, any member can withdraw any item on demand, which I did last month, the attorney says now that that, she doesn't agree with the Roberts Rules of Order, so that means that I have absolutely zero rights sitting up here to pull items out of this agenda, and therefore, every item has to be introduced individually.
Um, I, I believe what we're supposed to do, what we've always done, is move the business report, and then second it, and then we have items for discussion.
And then why was my item not discussed last month?
Member Johnston, please, let me finish. What we have done in past practice, and then we have discussion items, so I would like to still continue with that, and then we can have items that you want to discuss.
I appeal that decision, I appeal that decision of the chair.
Um, okay, I'm having a hard time seeing this.
That means it's debatable. Means that I've asked to have the body to appeal the decision of the chair, that means we have debate on it.
Okay. God, I can hardly see this. Do you have a second? Yes, right here.
I think the attorney here of six months ago ruled on the appeal erroneously, incidentally.
Excuse me, Member Johnston, I think you have appealed the decision of the chair, you need a second.
No, I appealed the decision of the chair, I'm appealing. You may want to look in that book that's sitting in front of you.
Oh, I think I've got this.
Two little pages there, may not have it on there.
Right here. Yeah, it says requires a second. Yeah, mm-hmm.
He's got a second.
Okay, and then it's debatable? So, Member Johnston?
Yes, what this board is setting up, a total black hole, that whenever anybody we cannot pull out, as soon as something is introduced, even though these are all totally independent items, like a Piedmont Elementary, change order for Denfeld, you're saying that the, you can introduce this in its entirety, the board, no member can pull anything out if the board likes to ignore that, and call for the motion. And I agree with the chair here that this has never been how it's done before, but last month, now the attorney's saying that you can stop debate at any time and actually ignore items that were withdrawn, that is totally, completely wrong. Not only is it violating our rules of order, it's violating the tradition that, gee, here we are, we used to say that we follow tradition here, the way this board works, now suddenly, when I have an item that I want to discuss, suddenly the tradition changes in one month. Isn't that amazing?
Um, Member Johnston, wait, 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 wait. Remember, Johnston? Were you, were you finished? Because I thought you were. Um, let, can I, let me just say something. Last month, we had discussion, and the question was called, and we had a two-thirds vote, and then we chose to vote on the entire business committee report. So we had a lot of discussion, but the question was called, which allowed us to be able to go on and vote when I said the entire business committee report we are going to vote on. So, we're not stopping doing any items to be withdrawn. All we've done is wanting to move the report, second it, and then, if you have some other items you would like to discuss, you may bring them forward to, for discussion. That's all we are saying.
The chair is missing a big point.
Member Johnston, please?
Please what?
Okay, now, go ahead, I will call in.
I think you're interrupting me, Madam Chair. I've heard the people here for the last hour not be, acknowledged by the chair, so now suddenly, here I am again. Let's go back to the point here, you're, you're mistaking the point that when we withdraw something, which is, which I've already quoted the rulings earlier today, that that is a separate item, and that demands a separate vote by any member, a separate vote is demanded. And you, when, when you go through, the way it's supposed to work by every organization except apparently the Duluth School Board, is that when an item is pulled out for a separate vote, that item is no longer part of the big motion. That's the whole point. Any member on demand on separate items such as this can demand a separate vote. I don't know how many of you have to say that. And this school board is now saying that that is no longer valid, and you can just stop this, even the items that were withdrawn, that's completely wrong, and as a consequence, of course, we had motions last week which were not even voted on. And, and of course, you disagree with that, but I guess that, I would suggest again that we follow the law, and maybe tell the truth, and do things right here, rather than going way off the deep end here and saying, oh gee, the board can, can shut off any, we don't believe in withdrawn items, any withheld items anymore, consent agenda. To me, it's just absolutely appalling.
Member Johnston, please turn off your light then, if you're finished. Member Casper?
Are you done? Thank you. Um, I'd like to, you know, if that's his, his concern, let's just go down the agenda and prove them one at a time, and just finish it. We can, we can have a, an ongoing discussion that could keep us here significantly longer than we've already been here, and I'm not saying time is an issue, but if that's, okay. But if we need to, let's go down and do them one at a time, and in very short order, if we can do that, and let's just do it.
I was going to offer actually a middle ground, that is, if Mr. Johnston has certain items he does want to vote on separately, have him pull those two or three, or whatever there are, and let's do those, and then do the rest by one motion, just to get through tonight, just to get out of here.
I like that idea. Superintendent?
I, not that it's, I don't know.
Well, I was told that last month...
Wait, wait, Member Johnston, wait a second.
You did not recognize the superintendent.
Um, so Superintendent Dixon...
So why are you saying that I can't speak now?
Um, so if, if there are a couple of items that Member Johnston wants pulled, and then we can vote on the rest of the consent agenda, or congen, yes, okay. Okay, Member Johnston, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I feel like I'm Charlie Brown here. I was told that last month as well. Now suddenly you're going to say, oh, we'll do it again, but as soon as we get this on, then you'll go through and, oh, let's call the question here again. The whole point, as a Member Casper indicated, was, is that let's go through and do it one at a time. If you want me to quote Roberts Rules, I will again. Again, this is page 265, line 2 to 6. Sometimes a series of independent resolutions, our main motions dealing with different subjects, are offered in one motion, as we have here. In such a case, one or more of the separate several resolutions or main motions must receive separate consideration and vote at the request of a single member. This board has elected to ignore that. They did last month, attorney says that they can elect to ignore it. I'll go on again, page 106, line 4 to 6. Any resolution in the series must be taken up and voted on separately at the demand of a single member. Such a demand can even be made when another has a floor. And I'd also remind this board that this is the custom that has been practiced by this board ever since I've been watching these meetings for the last three years. And now if you're going to say, oh, well, don't worry, don't worry, Member Johnston, we'll, we won't do that again. Well, I think you have done it, and, and I think that we should go through these one at a time, because that's, otherwise, violating another bylaw. Can add to the, I guess I got about five pages of an hour violating, I can, I'm glad to add another one. But again, I'd suggest it'd be better to follow the law and tell the truth, rather than do some Mickey Mouse thing by ignoring consent agendas that this board has been doing repeatedly for the last five years.
Okay. Uh, Member Grover?
I'm the one who called the question last month. And taking a glance back at the minutes that we approved this evening, as well as listening to some of the discussion right now, I remember quite clearly why I did so, because I was exasperated. And apparently four other board members were also exasperated enough to, to want to just be done, be done with the meeting. I am feeling that same way again tonight. And, Madam Chair, I think we need to vote on the appeal of the chair, and that is on the floor, and move forward from there, which, which would come back to me to move the business committee report.
Okay, thank you, Member Grover. It says, appeal from the decision of the chair, a vote is required, a majority, so, how do I say that?
I'm not done debating this yet, Madam Chair. When we do another point of order.
Um, you know, Member Casper, do you want to go ahead first?
Um, I am going to either support the calling of the question for the entire, or start voting on stuff. Those are the two things that I would like to do at this point. Either, let's move these issues forward, let's vote on them, let's move through this agenda, let's be concise in our conversation, bringing up the points that concern us, and then allow us to move forward. I'm prepared to do that at the wishes of this board.
Thank you, Member Casper. Do you want to go ahead one more time? Member Johnston?
Sure, I'll try to make it short. Member Grover made the motion there, exasperated as we were talking about negotiations, exasperated because we were having a discussion. I think this board is a deliberate body to have discussion, that discussion was not going on that long. And again, whether or not you don't like having, hearing me speak, by going through and doing that, you're violating the law. Period. You can go ahead and violate the law if you want, that's fine. I would suggest it'd be simpler not to violate the law and follow the rules, and we could move forward.
Okay, Member Grover, do you want to move the entire business?
We have to vote on the appeal.
Oh, we have to vote on the appeal, thank you. Okay, all those in favor of the appeal of the decision of the chair, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
No.
Okay, that fails 1...
2.
2, 6.
5.
2, 5, I'm sorry. I was saying 1, 6. Okay, Member Grover, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. 19 minutes to 12. Um, I, Madam Chair, I move the remainder of the business services report.
Second.
And, Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I call a question.
Okay, it's been...
And he needs a second.
He doesn't need a second.
Yeah, it does.
Okay, so first of all, we have the business...
Point of order, point of order, point of order interrupts anything that's been done.
We have the business...
Point of order...
I have to say what's been done.
Point of order can interrupt the chair, you're calling for a question, I'm in, I am point of order on that.
Member Johnston, I have to say what, what was moved and what was seconded. The business report was moved by Member Grover, seconded by Member Cameron.
I had a point of order before that was seconded.
That actually wasn't...
I guess, thank you for proving my point, Board, this is really nice. Thank you for the fact people have voted, to make sure we have no debate on the rest of this.
Okay, so if someone called the question, and someone seconded it, we can just vote on calling the question right now, correct?
That's absolutely correct, we can go home.
Okay, so we are going to vote on calling the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Okay, Member Casper?
I'm going to ask Member Johnston to please move it along. You've made your point, I believe you've made your point, we've given you, I've given you as a board, we've given you that opportunity, and it's time to, to address what's before us in a concise fashion. I believe you've been given the opportunity to make your point, and I'd like you, I'm asking you, in the essence of time, to do that.
I will agree to that, if that applies to the rest of the board. We could have avoided this last 15 minutes if the board had not followed the rules, so why am I to blame, Member Casper, and nobody else is here?
Okay, I think, I would ask the chair that we stop some of the disparaging remarks, because it's really getting out of hand, and we're all really tired, so, um, let's go through the business committee, report has been moved and seconded. What we need to do is if there's any items to be pulled for discussion. So, is, do you see anything? No, it doesn't look like it. Oh, Member Johnston?
1A.
Okay, 1A.
1B.
Okay.
And withheld, hold for separate vote, 3A1. Those last two are also withhold for a separate vote, also withhold for a separate vote, 4B1.
Okay, let's start with the first vote, 1A. Member Johnston, you have anything else, or you just want a separate vote on that?
Uh, no, there's a special one there.
Okay.
Guess I had a question on...
Put your microphone on.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I had a question on one of the items. Actually, this is a mistake, I'm actually, was, was supposed to have been 1B, not 1A, pardon me, Madam Chair, I did not have a question on 1A, it was actually 1B.
The approval of payments, of claims, that one, not the financial report. Great.
That is correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, a question on approval of payments of claims. One of the claims that I seen on the board book, unfortunately, I didn't bring my stuff along, but I remember, I think it looks like Member Glass has a copy, some of the legal costs that we're incurring. What those legal costs were, let's see, trying to find that particular item. This is not the one I've seen, but let me describe the item, and maybe Mr. Hanson can answer it to me. There's a bunch of items on legal costs, one of those legal costs are, I believe, are the current attorney that's here, her law firm, had several items there, $850 for board meeting at Old Central. Could you clarify, is that how much then, the attorneys that we have? Here it is. Andrew Dreyer is, for legal services, for $874 on November, on January 18. And that's indicated for school board at Hawks. Could you clarify, is that how much we're paying the attorney to sit in here?
The rate is by the hour, I can't, I'd have to pull the invoice to confirm. The rate is by the hour. I can't, I'd have to pull the invoice to confirm, just to make sure that I would have the right information for you, so...
When looking at cutting costs here for paying eight hundred dollars for the attorney to sit here, seems like maybe we should be reassessing that cost. Could you tell me how much we're paying them an hour?
I believe the rate is right around one fifty an hour.
Thank you. It seems to be a regular reoccurring thing, about eight hundred and fifty dollars.
So, okay, so we're going to vote on this separately then?
I didn't ask for a separate vote on that.
No, it was just discussion. Oh, it was just discussion. Okay, I thought you wanted a separate vote on that. Okay, one C.
That one C I did not pull up.
I have it written down that you did. Okay, keep going. Three A one. Right?
Uh, he did indicate that. No, I'll pass on that.
Okay, the next one is three A two.
Three A one, I just talked about one A. One C is what I was talking about.
Wait, Member Johnston?
Sure. Three A one is what I'd like to have a discussion on.
Oh, I thought you said you did want it.
No, it was one C was I thought you were referring to.
Oh, okay, so we're on three A one.
Right. We have to have a separate vote on that.
We'll go ahead and vote on three A one. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? So, it carries unanimously? Okay, we'll move on. Um, let's see, three A two.
This is a negotiating committee amendment that has been proposed, which I got cut off on last time. Just like to have a few comments, which I think are different from the last time we commented on. One of the last meeting, members Wasson and Grover stated that the school board doesn't negotiate contracts. I think that's completely wrong. Also, and that's a practical point here is one, since we're going to all be on the negotiating committee, due to policy number eighty thirty-five, we get extra pay. And not, and I'm personally opposed to getting extra pay for this. I don't think that we should be getting extra pay particularly given the budget issue. And right now, the way this is put on there, that the whole board, whenever there's any negotiations, will get extra pay up to a hundred and fifty dollars per session. I don't think that is exactly what this board had in mind and one reason that I have been bringing this up, that these amendments are done hodgepodge. There's no thought given to them about the effect on the other parts of the policy and that's why I'm opposing these things. It seems like whenever I bring up inconsistency that this board has with their policies, they go through immediately, go and try to change them. Of course, they only change half of the inconsistencies, not the rest. One of those inconsistencies is in eighty eighty, eighty eighty-five, which says, "The board shall not circumvent this salvage negotiation process by allowing school district administrators and members of the school board who have not been designated as members of the school board bargaining team to negotiate or attempt to negotiate with members of the employee in a bargaining team." This also incidentally violates Robert's Rules of Order, page three fifty-six, line nineteen to twenty-three, which states that bylaw changes should only be done on a quarterly or annual basis and not, in other words, shouldn't be done hodgepodge. Bylaws are supposed to be done in a meticulous manner and done, not just hodgepodge, whenever I bring up an inconsistency. So, again, I'm asking for a separate vote on this.
Member Grover?
I did not say that school boards, school boards don't negotiate or school board members don't negotiate. I said that this board in recent years has chosen as a board to not have board members directly involved in negotiations as far as sitting down and negotiating across the table. I also elaborated on that and pointed out that it's a matter of choice with individual boards, how they approach negotiations. A lot of districts do have board members negotiate directly across the table. A lot do not. A majority of this board has chosen to not to follow the latter course. So, just let's be careful on quoting each other.
Thank you, Member Grover. Just a clarification to eighty eighty-five is actually something different, I think. So, anyway, so we're going to vote on... Oh, maybe that's what it is. Okay, so we're going to vote on three A two at this time. All those in favor of three A two, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, so that passes five, two. Okay, and we're on three A three. Um, Member Johnston?
Asking for a separate vote.
Okay, let's vote on three A three. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? No. Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, we're on to the next four B one. Member Johnston?
Separate vote.
Okay, let's vote on that right away. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That's, oh, that's six, one. Member Glass voting against it. Okay, and then I think that's it. Oh, did I miss four B?
I have on my list four...
Oh, okay.
Four B two. What I had on my list, and I apologize, is on the next page, was six H.
Okay, okay, let me just make sure. Four B. Four B. Oh, that is three. Okay, four B two. Okay, which one then? Six H. Okay, Member Johnston?
Sure. This is this discussion. I did not pull out four B two, at least if I did, I apologize. I don't intend to pull out four B two. Six H. We've talked a lot at the committee meeting about school closings and I want to again thank the board for acknowledging this issue that I've been bringing up for the last six months. Unfortunately, some of the discussion that we had by this board was, let's have all three of these at all on the same day and then vote afterwards. I think that that is not, if this board wants to do this and then it wants to expect that we're going to pass an operating levy by treating the public this way, I think it would be a very poor idea to have. And of course, again, bringing up the issue here about what the statute says. Morgan Park, Middleton, Woodland, and Lincoln should also be included in this. And again, my, my only comments are here is that if this board wants to, again, wondering why we don't have a good relationship with the city and go ahead and have these kind of hearings that are kangaroo court hearings and make a mockery of the law, I think that we shouldn't do that.
Member Wasson?
You know, I've changed my mind on that. I think that we should have a week in between at least to vote on it. I think that would be a good idea. Mary thinks so, too. We could have the hearings at the sites and, you know, maybe do two in a night or afternoon. Sure, travel between them and then at least wait a week, at least.
At least.
And then vote.
Okay.
Members of the board, I will bring up recommendation back to you in this. This was just to start the discussion, so I'll bring that back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Member Glass?
Uh, yes, I'll add my two cents worth in that since these are important hearings and we don't want to rush it and we've got a reasonable amount of time, one a month would not burden us. If we start it now, we'd be done by July and that would not be an imposition to anyone. So, that would be my suggestion, one a month.
You don't want to remind the board that the law says that decisions, hearings are supposed to be made before the decision is made and it's quite obvious this board has made the decision a long time ago and it's nor this is light as a mockery. Of course, the comment by Member Wasson proved my point.
Okay, oh, Member Cameron?
You know, I'm just thinking that perhaps because those are the summer months, that we should do a survey to find out when our constituents would be available to attend those meetings. I'm just kidding.
Okay, Member Grover?
Is Member Cameron being facetious here?
She is.
All right. I'm the member, Chair's legal...
Wait, we need to vote on the entire business report first.
Sorry, you're right.
So, let's go ahead and vote on the entire business report. Member Johnston, you still have something? Go ahead.
Again, reminding the superintendent that we just also have policy that involves school closing that has to be followed. Followed.
I haven't made a recommendation yet.
Member Glass? Member Glass? Okay, Member Glass, you had something to say?
Yes, I want to recognize that I didn't do my usual withdrawal, so to save time.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to vote on the rest of the business committee that has not been voted on. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No. No.
Okay, five to two. Okay, I'm going to accept a motion to adjourn a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.